As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Doll. Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
I've confirmed that council members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, council members Claffey, Doll, and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform. In addition, Clerk of Council Faith Simmons is participating on Zoom as well as at various times during the meetings this evening, Dr. Laura Carnegie with the Central Shenandoah Health District, Sarah Scrobis, the city's library director, Jay Langston with the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, Jason Elkubi with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and Melanie Barnes with Level 3. All other participants are present in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for the public comment by telephone can be found on agenda for the regular meeting and on council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D 2020-04 as extended by City Council Ordinance Number 2020-24. Okay, with that said, I would like to ask everyone that comes into City Hall and the chambers if you can please wear your mask. Also, I'd like to ask the city council members if they could please recognize the mayor, if they would like to speak, and the mayor will recognize you. With that said, I'll entertain a motion for consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Let's see here. Get to the point.
You got it, Carrie. Anybody?
Yeah, I got it here.
Councilman Holmes?
I move to approve the work session and special meetings as follows. Special meeting 12-1, 12-8, and...
What's the group of minutes?
Oh, minutes. Oh, okay.
You want the agendas?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentation by Virginia Economic Development Partnership and Shenandoah Valley Partnership concerning Stanton Crossing.
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's economic development director, will introduce our guests on this subject this evening, but before he does so, if I can just frame the presentations briefly, our goal here is to give council members some context to the city's current efforts at Stanton Crossing. And our hope with the presentations that you're going to hear this evening is to give you some insight as to why we've been pursuing the recommendations for Stanton Crossing in the Timmins Prepared Business Development Plan approved by the EDA and City Council previously, and also to give you insight to VEDP and the Shenandoah Valley Partnership's perspective concerning the plan and the city's efforts. Those, you know, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, of course, is the statewide agency, an agency of the Commonwealth of Virginia that spearheads the Commonwealth's economic development efforts, and the Shenandoah Valley Partnership is a public-private partnership here in the Shenandoah Valley that, to which the city of Stanton belongs, and it is the point for economic development efforts here in this region. So with that background, I'll ask Mr. Vaughn to introduce the two gentlemen who joined us this evening. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I think Mr. Rosenberg has pretty much covered the topic for tonight, and I'd like to say that we're very fortunate tonight to have these two individuals with us. They are key partners in the city's effort to market our community. And as Steve, Mr. Rosenberg, mentioned, we have our state partner, Jason Elkubi. He's the executive vice president of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and again, our state partner, which we work very closely with. And then our second speaker tonight will be our regional partner, and of course, the city is a member of this organization. We have Dr. Jay Langston, very good friend, very good friend of mine, Sundays. He's executive director of the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, and of course, again, a very close entity, his organization, and a key organization in our success in marketing the city. I believe Jason will go first, and then he can hand it off to Jay. Welcome.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, it is, it's nice to be with you. It's not as nice as being in Stanton. I think this is my first time addressing you as a councilor, mayor, and so forth, but just want you to know that I am very fond of your community. I've really gotten to know it through, well, in a lot of ways, but among others, through my relationship with both Billy and Jay. You really have a fabulous community. I like it both professionally and personally, and just applaud you in that sense. What I'd like to do is just make some brief remarks tonight to give you a little bit of context on why sites matter, just in general, why project-ready, excuse me, project-ready sites in particular matter in economic development. So that's the first thing. And then secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about Stanton Crossing and give you a sense of, at least at the state level, how we think about that particular site in the context of your region and also in the context of the state overall. So let's start with why sites matter. Well, first of all, when economic development projects are considering where to locate, there's a number of factors that they look at. They look at things like, well, and these are some of the big ones. Obviously, they're looking for a good workforce, they're looking for good talent, they're looking for a supportive business climate, a place that partners with business to drive growth, they're looking for a place that has an attractive quality of life, a place where people want to call home, and very importantly, particularly for manufacturing projects, for distribution and logistics process, projects, they are looking for a site in building that is suitable. And in this case, there's a number of factors that are really important. One of the huge factors is time. A second huge factor is risk. And so what we've seen is that over the years, the timeline for businesses to make a decision, the timeline in which they demand being able to ramp up to capacity, that timeline has shortened significantly. And what that means is that, what that means is that they're really looking for a site that is, you know, basically ready to build on. They want a project-ready site. They don't want to spend a lot of time, you know, doing the sort of due diligence, the environmental, in some cases, the grading. They certainly don't want to, you know, have to wait for major work. The timing required for those sorts of things is a major factor, but also the risk of those things not having been done already is a major factor because if they sort of get into that work and discover something that was not, that was not anticipated, that can not only cause major time delays, it can also cause major additional investment, and it potentially may not work as a site for that particular business. So we have seen, you know, the timeline typically compressed from one that, you know, in the old days was maybe in years to one that is now in months. And so communities that have sites that are project-ready, that are immediately ready for development are in a much more competitive position to win competitive economic development projects. This is a huge issue for Virginia. And by the way, this is a huge issue for every state. There's not a single state that has sort of figured this out. But just to give you some perspective, Virginia has lost a lot of projects over the last several years because we have not had a site of sufficient quality and readiness to meet the needs of the project. Just to put some numbers around this, we have missed out on tens of thousands of jobs, billions of dollars in capital investment due to the lack of prepared sites. In fact, just looking over the last three years, we know that we have been eliminated from consideration for at least 65 different projects totaling nearly 19,000 jobs, over $5 billion in capital investment. That's for fiscal years 17 through 19, so three years. Those are just the projects we know about. The reality is that the total sort of lost opportunity is actually larger than what I just shared with you guys, but it gives you, it gives you a sense of the magnitude of what we're talking about. And just to give you a little more sense about what the process looks like, typically these projects start with a company or the company's consultants requesting information from the state or from the community, but typically from the state, basically asking for a list of properties that meet their criteria. So, you know, their whole site selection process starts with, in most cases, starts with the property, you know. It doesn't start with the quality of life. In many cases, it doesn't start with the workforce because if there's not a site of sufficient quality and readiness, then it just doesn't work. And so it is a hugely important thing. Once you go through that property submittal, we respond, VEDP typically responds with the project-ready sites that meet the prospect criteria, and often that prospect criteria includes multiple other things, workforce and so forth. The company reviews that information, and then from that, it basically develops a short list of communities to visit and take a closer look at. So that's, that's kind of the process in a nutshell. So hugely important issue for Virginia, hugely important issue for every region that wants to be competitive, and every community that wants to be competitive for these kinds of projects. So let's, let's talk a little bit about Stanton Crossing in particular. So in 2019, we went through a major process in partnership with regional partners like Jay, local partners like Billy, and many, many others, a lot of engineering firms. We went through a huge process to take a close look at every site that we knew of in Virginia that was greater than 25 acres and that was intended for economic development use. So just to give you a sense of what this was, this was 466 different sites across the Commonwealth. And the reason that we did this is we really wanted to understand what the strengths and weaknesses of those sites were. We wanted to understand our total portfolio, to understand essentially how we could strategically invest in sites, where were we strong, where were we weak, and things like that. So we did two kind of major things for every one of these 466 sites. The first thing that we did is we developed what we called a developability score. And in kind of simple terms, this was a measure of how much time and money it would take to get the sites to project-ready status. So for the sites that would take a lot of time and a lot of money, or I should say, a lot of time and/or a lot of money, they got relatively low developability scores. For sites that involved less time and less money, they got relatively high developability scores. So that was one big thing we did, developability scores for every site. The second thing we did is we worked with a leading site selection consulting firm to basically look at the locations in which each of these sites are located, to basically understand how suitable are these areas for, not just the physical properties of the site, but the, you know, sort of the workforce, the connectivity, how suitable are these, are these locations for the kinds of sectors that we would like to attract? And so for the, for the, you know, the location suitability, if it was, you know, if you had the workforce, if you had the infrastructure, if you had the other assets that are needed, the site would rank, or I should say, the location would rank relatively high. You know, if you didn't have that, those factors, you know, it would rank somewhat lower. So we ran all 466 sites through this analysis of developability, but also suitability of the location for the kinds of sectors that we hope to attract and that communities like yours and regions like yours hope to attract. So the, the, the outcome of that analysis for Stanton Crossing is that it was clearly among the most attractive sites for further development in the GOVA Region 8. It had fewer physical developability challenges than most of its peer sites. Just to put numbers around this, Stanton Crossing's developability score was in, you know, basically in the top 25% of sites statewide. So it's a, it's a, it's a highly developable, developable site, you know, in the context of the overall portfolio. It's also important to say that it got the highest developability score among the large sites in GOVA Region 8, and those are sites that are more than 150 acres altogether. So it's a highly developable, developable, major site, both for the region and for the state. Obviously, you guys know that the state has taken a big interest in this site over the years. The second thing to note about Stanton Crossing, and this is based on the evaluation of that site selection firm I mentioned earlier, it is, it is regarded, and not just regarded, it's evaluated as a highly attractive site for a wide range of projects. Similar to its developability, its sector suitability scores were above the 75th percentile. That means in the top quarter of GOVA Region 8 sites in all sector, all six sectors for which it was evaluated. Also, it received the single highest sector suitability score in GOVA Region 8 for four sectors in particular, and that's large advanced manufacturing, large light manufacturing, large distribution, and small advanced manufacturing. And so, you know, relative to all sites in the state, Stanton Crossing received above median scores in all sectors and above the 75th percentile in four sectors. So very, very attractive site overall. You know, I've seen a lot of information on this, but I suspect it's mostly information that you're somewhat familiar with, and certainly information that Billy and Jay are more familiar with than I am. So I just want to maybe pause there. I know we might want to leave some time for questions, so just want to give you the overall perspective at a state level and ask Billy or the mayor and the council, should I just turn it over to Jay, or you want to, you want to pause for questions?
Why don't we pause, why don't we pause for a moment for questions? Are there any questions or comments by council members?
Mayor Oakes.
Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. Of the 466 sites, how many are in Go Virginia Region 8?
That's a really good question.
I have the answer, Jason.
Okay, good.
Of that, there were 45 that were considered in Go Virginia Region 8.
Thank you.
Mayor Oakes.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes, out of those 45, what, how many are in close proximity to Stanton within, let's say, I don't know, 25, 50 mile radius?
That would be approximately half of the sites would be within that radius that you just defined. And this gives me a great segue to also further define sort of the ranking of the sites of what we were, we found from that, too, because Jason did a great overview of sort of the status of the state in Go Virginia Region 8. Billy received the same information in the same meeting that I attended in December of 2019. Out of those 45 sites, only two met the criteria that Jason just identified as being project-ready. Only one of those was within the SVP footprint, which means from, you know, Rockbridge County to the northern part of Shenandoah County. One additional site was project-ready out of our entire region. And that was a wake-up call for us based upon what Jason just explained by the speed to market and the competitiveness of our business.
And that, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
And that one, that one that you're speaking of, sir, is that in close proximity to us that would be something that would be of competition to Stanton?
That is correct. It is Mill Place. It was the only site identified in our region and in very close proximity to you in Verona.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Let me ask this question then. Mill Place, we have heard as much that it may be even categorized as a Tier 4. Would the state, would the state, having two places that close in proximity, would they actually rank two places within five miles of each other and have two Tier 4 entities that close together? Would the state do that?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. I mean, the, the, in terms of the tier levels, these sites are evaluated independently. So I guess our perspective is sort of the more the merrier, if you will, in terms of having, you know, multiple high-quality sites. In fact, you know, because this is, you know, because it's such a significant issue and that, you know, so many places are struggling with this, I think places that have, you know, the inventory, you know, are going to tend to do well in these sectors over the next several years.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, may I, may I speak to add to Jason's comment?
Go right ahead.
Also, the nature of the development is a time-intensive process, and Jason is right. We have been very fortunate to be a growing region. We are consuming our good parks at a good pace, which shows success. Mill Place, for example, really only has about 70 acres left, so it is nearing the end of its lifetime. We also need, in order to be successful, Stanton needs, in order to be successful, new sites coming into this pipeline to be available, particularly when you consider the length of time that it takes to develop a site.
Okay. I have a question. You had mentioned that Stanton ranked in the top tier as far as bringing in advanced manufacturing, large advanced manufacturing, small advanced manufacturing. For the benefit of our listeners as well as the council, can you give some examples?
Sorry, is that, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, what I, what I intended to say was that with, in the, in the site consultants, the site selection consultants' evaluation of Stanton Crossing, it received the highest suitability score for the sectors that you just mentioned. So like large advanced manufacturing, large light manufacturing, large distribution, small advanced manufacturing. So it doesn't mean that, that, you know, that those projects have already located there. It means that the site is highly suitable for those kinds of projects.
I understand that. I'm just wondering if you could give us some examples of what...
Oh, yeah, Jay, did you want to, did you want to take?
Go ahead, Jason, and I can, I can fill in as well.
Well, it could be a variety of things. I mean, so, so large advanced manufacturing, you know, could be...
I'll bail you out, Jason.
Go ahead.
One of our major sectors, food and beverage, which is very highly technical and sophisticated, is a good example of a target for us nowadays at this. Likewise, the logistics industry has become a very technically sophisticated operation as well. A lot more investment per square foot than it was even just 10 years ago now are two good examples of what we are both very strong in as a region and have a good opportunity to attract. I shared with Billy just the other day, I received a request, not a request, but a notification from one of the major realtors that he had just completed a request for information for a developer who was interested in developing 800,000 square feet of speculative space. He told me that Stanton was ground zero for where they would like to be. Now, that doesn't mean that there is a project that is definitely looking, but someone is considering that kind of opportunity right now. So that really indicates the kind of strength that there is in the marketplace around Stanton and the opportunities that might be availed if sites are further developed. Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Gentlemen, are we still talking, are we still talking that the Stanton Crossing site is a Tier 2 project? I believe that's where it is right now. Yes, so when we're comparing a Level 2 site to a Tier 4 site, such as Mill Place, would be a Tier 4 site?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So there's, there's a dramatic difference between the two. Is it, is it true that the COVID crisis of the last year has changed the way people are developing land and has, has changed the criteria? And is this being adjusted in your rankings? Or were your rankings done two years ago based on what people thought was appropriate at that timeframe?
I guess the way I would answer that is that I think the COVID crisis has...
I guess the way I would answer that is that I think the COVID crisis has, has caused, you know, a significant number of manufacturing operations to consider reshoring. Also, because of the challenges with supply chains, distribution and logistics this year, there is a move towards building greater resilience in, in supply chains in particular. So looking at, you know, basically manufacturing companies in particular are looking to reshore and establish, you know, additional sourcing facilities. I think essentially what it, what it, what it means is that the, the, the volume of, of project opportunities is likely to increase somewhat. We are not, you know, and, you know, obviously the timeline for that is a little bit uncertain given that, you know, the world is, is still largely, you know, largely locked down. But I would say in terms of what companies are looking for in sites, what they are, their expectations in terms of timing, in terms of risk mitigation, that really has not changed much. And so I, I think that, you know, just like two years ago, you know, places that have a development-ready inventory of sites will tend to put themselves in a good position for economic development.
Okay, if I may follow up with that, we've had a, several statements made that up to three thousand jobs can be generated by our Stanton Crossing sites. What type of industry do you foresee that would produce three thousand jobs in, in Stanton and Augusta County? And do we have the labor force necessary to fulfill that?
You know, I guess I would defer to Jay somewhat on, on some of this, but one, one thing to consider when you look at those job numbers is, you know, the, the types of projects that we are trying to attract with these types of sites are projects that not only create a significant number of direct jobs, in other words, jobs, jobs that are at the company that is, you know, locating on the site, but they also have an even larger number of indirect jobs. So, so for example, you know, it's a typical manufacturer, for every, for every direct job on the site will create, you know, two or three other jobs.
In the community.
In the region. And so when you think about those big numbers and try to figure out, well, how does that work? I don't, I'm, I'm not super familiar with the analysis that was done for, you know, this particular site, but, you know, when you consider that, you know, these projects tend to have large multipliers, it, it ends up having a significant impact on the rest of the community. You know, suppliers that are supporting the, the business that's on the site in a direct way, but also, you know, the additional spending that's happening from employees, from the business generating, you know, restaurant activity, retail activity and that sort of thing.
Mr. Claffey, Jason did a great job of explaining the multiplier effect of a location of a company. For example, our strength in the food and beverage in this region is four times higher than the national average. So our multiplier, when you receive a, a food manufacturer here, creates more indirect jobs because there's so much infrastructure in the region that supports that, you know, pinnacle at the top, like a Hershey, like a McKee, like a Purdue and so forth and so on. Plus, we have the strength of other manufacturing in the valley that has, is not as well-known but is as significant. So like a Dyken Applied, like a Newman Aluminum, like a Nibco, that have a pretty deep, very sophisticated support structure with CNC machining and tooling that helps service these companies. Major subcontractors like Blau Brothers and Riddle Burger, who employ hundreds of, of piece for them that are serving these industries in that way. And so that's where you get the agglomeration effect and add up those jobs. So there really is not only a positive impact for the city, but at the region at large as well in that. Those that I just mentioned, along with, I think, some service sector companies is, as well, are great targets for Stanton Crossing because of your proximity to markets and the location right there on the interstate.
Okay, we are actually, out of time, I know the vice mayor has a question, if it can be quickly answered. This is very intriguing and I'm sorry to, I have to cut gentlemen off, but maybe you can come back for part two. Vice Mayor Robertson.
I just want, and, and maybe Billy can answer that for me or whatever, but I, I'm just real quick, looking at the summary from the Timmons Group, and I'm, basically, once we get it to tier four, once we get it to tier three, then we're looking at basically nine hundred thousand to a million thirty to get it to tier four. And I, real quick math, about a hundred and fifty thousand what's showing, but that doesn't include building a new VDOT road, demolishing the buildings. So we're looking at a couple million or more just to get it to there yet or more?
I did not look at the details of those numbers. You may be correct, but what, what I will say is that the state has invested, invested significantly in Stanton Crossing, and I'll put Jason on the spot to say that we hope that they'll provide additional funding for us to move to tier four.
Yes, and I'm with you, Billy.
All right, well, thank you very much. And again, I'm, I'm sorry to have to cut your presentation off. Again, we appreciate this valuable information. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Pleasure to be with you.
Pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item number three, a presentation of the draft FY 2021 through 2025 capital improvement plan.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council. Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to review the FY 21 to 25 draft CIP plan. As in most years, there's tremendous amount of information packed into this plan, and we'll try to summarize the changes in each fund and communicate why the changes have occurred. This year's plan totals seventy-nine million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars is broken out as follows. General Fund, forty-two million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. Schools, nine million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Water Fund, nineteen million, eight hundred and five thousand. Sewer Fund, one million, eight hundred and five thousand. Stormwater Fund, four million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand. And Parking Fund, one million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Slide three. As in previous years, the basic framework of the CIP has remained relatively unchanged as we continue to fund annual reserves for street projects, sidewalk projects, fire equipment, greenway projects, utility projects, pedestrian paths, and beginning in FY 22, cardiac heart monitors and self-contained breathing apparatuses for the fire department. Slide four addresses major changes in two previously scheduled projects in response to updated project specifications and scope. The first is our telephone replacement project, which is one million dollars and includes the replacement of outdated and unsupported network switches.
Mayor Oaks, excuse me, just one minute. Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Mead.
Yeah, are we supposed to be looking at a slide deck on our screens?
Actually, no. Ms. Mead, it was emailed to you by Ms. Beauregard earlier today.
Thank you.
I can wait a second. Continue.
Go ahead, yes, please.
Thank you. The project also increases network redundancy and replaces the telephone equipment itself. This project was previously approved and funded via budget amendment number four, which was considered on December tenth, two thousand and twenty. The next project is the emergency radio system, which has moved back one year from an FY 21, 22 implementation to an FY 22, 23 implementation. More importantly, we are able to attain a clearly defined scope in this project, which required a major increase in our placeholder amount of eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars moving to four million. This project will replace equipment which has reached the end of its useful life and will be compatible with surrounding localities. On-moneys will be required to fund this project. Slide five outlines FY 21 planned modifications, which include the police station being moved from an FY 21, 22 implementation to FY 23 with the same placeholder amount. As of now, we are comfortable with this amount, and this is a more reasonable timeframe, given the timing of other projects. Next, reserve funding was cut to FY 21 for fire truck replacement, VDOT matching grants and sidewalk projects. This was done to balance the revised FY 21 COVID budget. Finally, FY 21 reserve provisions for the Middle River Regional Jail expansion and emergency radio replacement for five hundred thousand and four hundred thousand dollars respectively were transferred back into the general fund in FY 2020 to offset potential revenue losses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Slide six outlines FY 22's many modifications. Reduced provisions for Middle River Regional Jail expansion went from five hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. This was done to assist the city in balancing the increasing CIP demands while allowing the city to pay for its share of design fees, which are expected to be incurred in FY 22. We added a three hundred thousand dollar provision for HVAC replacement at the city hall building. The HVAC system in this building has been in operation for well over twenty-one years and is in need of replacement. We added a thirty thousand dollar and ten thousand dollar reserve funding for self-contained breathing apparatus and cardiac monitor replacements. The idea is that we will build up reserves so as to not to disproportionately impact the city's budgets every five years or so. Again, the telephone replacement project has been moved to FY 21 due to obsolete of network switches, and we increased the provision from five hundred thousand to one million dollars as the project scope was finalized. We adjusted the emergency radio provision, which increased from four hundred thousand to two million dollars, one-half of the revised estimated project. We added two sidewalk projects, West Beverly Street to Gruber Street sidewalk scheduled for fifty thousand dollars. The other project is the Edgewood Road sidewalk project, which goes from North Augusta to North Colter. So it turns out this project was inadvertently scheduled to begin in FY 22. In reality, this is a VDOT-sponsored project, and the process will begin in FY 23 and will take multiple years to come to fruition. But for the advocates of this project, it is on the state schedule, it is in our plan, and it will occur. We will adjust the scheduling of this project and submit provisions to the CIP plan electronically to council. We will also add North Augusta Street sidewalk projects, as these two are on the VDOT capital improvement plan. I would like to thank Adam Campbell from the Planning Commission and VDOT for his assistance in assuring the proper scheduling of these projects occurred. Next, we added a golf cart provision of two hundred thousand dollars to purchase forty-four carts in anticipation of the golf course committee's recommendation. Planning Commission and city council will need to approve this item, but knowing the request was coming, I chose to budget for it upfront rather than scramble at a later date to balance our budget if this item were to be added. It is easier to take a project off the schedule than it is to add. Finally, we moved the firehouse provision of four point five million dollars to FY 24, again, similar to the police station repositioning. This was due to the timing of other projects. Slide seven. On slide seven, we look at the FY 23 modifications, which include adding the police provision of seven million dollars. We added a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the HVAC units which serve the police department. They're of similar age as to the main city hall building. Emergency radio system provision of two million dollars was added. This is the second half of the revised projected cost. We added thirty thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars reserve funding for self-contained breathing apparatus and cardiac monitor replacements. We added a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for nine eleven call handling equipment. It's recommended that we update this equipment every five years or so. We are on a six-to-seven-year cycle, and IT has recommended that persons, this equipment occur in conjunction with the move of the police station. For schools, we've added provision for school warehouse acquisition slash renovation of two point five million, and then we moved the telephone replacement from twenty-three to twenty-one as previously discussed. Slide eight. FY 24 modifications include adding the firehouse replacement of four point five, and again, this was moved from twenty-three to twenty-four. We added thirty thousand and ten thousand reserve funding for fire equipment. FY 25, we added a five hundred thousand dollar provision for Middle River Regional Jail. Provisions for fire truck replacement reserves, cardiac monitors, self-contained breathing apparatuses are included as our street and sidewalk reserve, maintenance, greenways, bike and pedestrian paths. Montgomery Hall practice field lights have been added. There has been some inquiries as to move this project up to FY 22, and we'll allow council to guide us on this. And we budget education reserves for the Blue Ridge Community College and city schools. Slide nine. Unfinished and unscheduled projects remain largely unchanged. Two modifications did occur and are as follows. We moved the West Beverly, Gruber Street sidewalk project to FY 22, and we, we will need to modify the scheduling of the Edgewood Street sidewalk to keep in line with VDOT's plan. Scope of the Middle River Regional Jail expansion is scheduled to become clear in the next sixty to one hundred and twenty days. Current estimates are in the one point seven million dollars of additional expenditure on an annual basis for this project. These, these amounts represent both operating and debt service accounts and are above the current jail expense of two point four million dollars. Slide ten. Schools. Overall, the FY 21 CIP plan for schools equals six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. It includes annual funding from reserves for mechanical roof and generator replacement of one hundred thousand dollars. Parking expansion for wear, seventy-five thousand. Parking expansion from explains, seventy-five thousand. Middle school CTE cabinet appliance replacement, sixteen thousand. Middle school carpet, fifteen thousand. School parking lot paving, one hundred thousand dollars. And a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar provision is added for the Dixon Education Center to enhance CTE-related programs for secondary education. Reserves for school bus, maintenance vehicles, IT replacement, furniture placements were eliminated due to COVID reductions, and the tennis court project will become part of the high school project and funded by high school bond interest proceeds. Slide eleven. FY 22 education plan includes provisions for furniture, twenty-five thousand. Maintenance vehicles and ground equipment, fifty thousand. Mechanical roof and generators, one hundred thousand. Paving of parking lots, one hundred thousand. Dixon education improvements, two hundred and fifty. School warehouse project, local school funding provision of three hundred thousand dollars. As a note, provisions for bus replacement and IT equipment replacement have been waived in FY 22 in response to FY 21's funding. Slide twelve. Funding reserves remain consistent through FY 23 and 25, with the exception of the Dixon Reserve funding in FY 24, which will go towards a middle school CTE improvements. Singular non-recurring projects totaling six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand are as follows. Park concession explains, seventy-five. Park concession wellers, seventy-five. School warehouse, a total of two point eight million. Shellburn CTE renovations, two point five. Shellburn student meeting space, one point two million, and Shellburn CTE equipment library, thirty-one thousand. Total non-recurring, six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand. One major project remains unfunded and unscheduled, fifteen million dollars for the renovation of Dixon Education Center. As you can see, there's a heavy emphasis on Shellburn. The city helped to renovate the elementary schools, and then we built a new high school, and so now the emphasis is on the middle school. Stormwater. Slide thirteen. Changes to the stormwater projects may be greatly impacted by the recommendations from the flood study, which was initiated earlier this fiscal year and scheduled for completion in early twenty-one. As of now, we've pushed projects back one year and will regroup once the study is received. FY 21 changes included, include adding the flood study at a cost of seventy-eight thousand dollars with Wiley Wilson engineers, and we pushed the Gypsy Hill stream renovation back into FY 22 pending recommendations from the stormwater study. All other projects have been moved back one year. Unfunded and unscheduled projects remain unchanged. Slide fourteen. Water fun. In FY 21, we added the Shutter Lee mill tank painting and repair project for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This project became a priority after inspections indicated immediate, immediate preventative maintenance was necessary to maintain this tank. We also added the Clearwell tank repair at the water treatment plant for an estimated one point five million dollars. This project was added as some leaks were detected at the Clearwater tank, and work will begin in the spring as temperatures reach a level which allow for tank repairs to be performed. Water facility fee balances are slated to cover these costs. In FY 22, we added water line repair, repair provision of four hundred thousand dollars. We removed groundwater source evaluation of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars as this is deemed unnecessary at this time, given the two main as this is deemed unnecessary at this time, given the two main initiatives of Gardner Springs and the North River Pipeline. FY twenty three, we removed the groundwater source evaluation of two hundred and twenty five thousand. In FY twenty four, we added the Richmond Avenue water line upgrade of two point two million dollars. This project was added in anticipation of sale and development of Stanton Crossing property. FY twenty five, we added water line provision of four hundred thousand dollars. Unscheduled unfunded products remain unchanged, except for the scheduling of the Richmond Avenue upgrade in FY twenty four. Slide fifteen starts with the sewer fund. Changes to sewer fund in twenty one include we moved one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from FY twenty two to replace four hundred and forty linear feet of sewer line from Reservoir Street to Somerson Street, and we spent one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace four hundred and ten linear feet of deteriorated line along East Beverly Street. FY twenty two, the Commerce Road Sewer Line Survey and Design of one hundred thousand dollars remains as previously planned. Manhole replacement reserves have been removed as public works feels like we have stabilized in this area. FY twenty three, no changes. Commerce Road Sewer Line Phase Two replacement funding of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars remains as previously planned. Slide sixteen. FY twenty four, again, no changes in twenty four. Commerce Sewer Line Phase Two replacement funding of four hundred and fifty remains as previously planned. In FY twenty five, we added preliminary engineering design work for the Lewis Creek Line of one hundred thousand dollars and three hundred thousand dollars respectively. Unfunded, unscheduled. We moved Phase Three and Phase Four preliminary engineering design work for the Lewis Street upgrade to twenty five. All other projects remain unchanged. Your last slide, seventeen. Slide seventeen reviews the project's schedule for the parking fund. Progress in this area has been delayed for several reasons. Primarily, the credit card merchant processor selection, which took far longer than anticipated, as compatibility issues with our current software was worked out. This had to be done prior to the selection of automated parking equipment to ensure compatibility with our merchant processor. Secondly, the COVID nineteen shutdown complicated this fund particularly from a cash flow basis. And the third reason is turnover in public works. And there's between the engineering department and public works, there's been a significant amount of turnover, and this has slowed progress of this project. Parking CIP products have been handled much the same way as stormwater projects, and have been moved back one year. We anticipate moving on the new street parking access equipment very soon. We hope to have an RFP on the street within the next ninety to one hundred and twenty days. And we'll be happy to address any questions. Ms. Darby, I know this is the second time around for you, and I apologize for you having to sit twice.
Thank you. I will say that we are over time. We will be reviewing this again on January twenty eighth and February eleventh.
Yes, ma'am.
So if anyone has an urgent question they would like to ask now, if we can have it answered quickly, otherwise I'd like to stay on schedule. Councilmember Holmes.
Yes, Mr. Trey. How did we arrive at forty four golf carts? That seems like quite a few golf carts to me. You know, I just don't.
Yeah, the. May I answer your question if I may? Mr. Holmes, the detail concerning that figure will be shared with council on January twenty eighth, when the committee will present its report and recommendations to council. And instead of having Mr. Trey preview that, my suggestion is that Mr. Obenschein, the Chair of the Committee, have the opportunity to share the basis for the recommendation with council on the twenty eighth.
Right. Thank you. That was City Manager Steve Rosenberg speaking.
Mayor Oaks, Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
I was hoping that we would get a copy of the golf committee's recommendations prior to the meeting next week, so with our agenda package. That would be very helpful.
Well, the package will go out at the end of the next, at the end of next week, which is a week prior to the presentation on the twenty eighth.
I understand.
So I will check with Mr. Tuttle and see what we can do perhaps to get it to you maybe the morning of your meeting on the twenty eighth.
All right.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilmember Dole.
I had a. In terms of the CIP, I feel like I don't know exactly what's going on with some of these projects and why changes are made, and it's a whole lot of information that we go over so quickly. I wondered if we could have a special, you know, session where we could just have only discuss the CIP with Mr. Trey and any other department heads that wanted to provide information. I may be the only one that feels that way, but I thought I'd throw it out there and see what anybody else thought.
Councilmembers.
I don't have a problem with that because it's overwhelming.
Okay, that was Vice Mayor Robertson, Councilman Holmes. All right, I have no issues with that. This is Mayor Oaks. Councilmember Darby?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Councilmember Claffey and Mead?
Very helpful.
No problem. I'd love to do it.
All right. Can you schedule that, please?
We certainly can make those arrangements. We'll be in touch concerning a schedule for that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trey. All right. So the next item is item number four on your work session and H on your regular meeting. Discussion of uncodified emergency ordinance ratifying, reconfirming, and reaffirming uncodified emergency ordinance twenty twenty dash oh four and extending the time of reenactment. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. You will all recall that back in March, at the onset of the pandemic, council first adopted an emergency ordinance, which among other measures, made provision for meetings by city council and other public bodies of the city using electronic communication platforms, including, for example, Zoom, which we're using for this evening's meeting. That initial authorization expired in September, and at that time, council adopted an additional ordinance to further extend the continuity of government provisions for a three-month period, which expires tomorrow. And so what you have before you this evening is an ordinance to again extend the authorization under the ordinance originally adopted in March of twenty twenty. There's a blank for the date, which during the regular meeting, when a motion is made to adopt the ordinance, if that's council's desire, would be completed as a part of the final motion. What we have done this evening is to invite Dr. Laura Carnegie, the Health Director of the Central Shenandoah Health District, to join us so that she can give council members a sense of current conditions related to the pandemic and the public health emergency with the thought that that will inform council members as you consider what decision to make concerning the extension of the ordinance for an additional period of time. So with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Carnegie to share her remarks with council.
Welcome, Dr. Carnegie.
Hey, thank you so much for having me. As you all are probably aware, our case counts throughout the district, really throughout the state and the nation, have been on the rise since just after Thanksgiving. Our district continues to record the largest case counts to date. We had approximately two thousand cases last week for the district, which was our, you know, highest level of COVID nineteen cases since the pandemic started. The district remains with widespread community transmission, as does the, you know, the state and really the nation as a whole. The good news is that we do have vaccines that we're starting to roll out, and that will be our ultimate weapon to ending this pandemic. That rollout is going to be massive and time consuming, and it's going to need to include, you know, up to seventy five to eighty percent of people in the United States in order to gain herd immunity, to decrease, you know, just decrease transmission and kind of wipe out the viral spread. That's going to take some time. Even as we roll out vaccine efforts, we're still recommending the same mitigation efforts to continue, and that would be broadly the three Ws. Wearing a mask, washing your hands, and watching your distance, socially distancing. So all of those efforts are going to need to overlap our vaccine efforts, and the best estimates of discontinuation of those mitigation efforts would be really looking, you know, towards the summertime, probably, probably at a minimum. So given the fact that in order to control community transmission, even with vaccine distribution, we're going to need to continue mitigation efforts. I think continuing with social distancing efforts for people who can work at home, work remotely, those efforts are still important, and using technology to avoid large groups until we get to a level of population immunity to this coronavirus is going to be prudent. So I would support continuation of your efforts.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Holmes.
Have we had any of the new strains turn up here in our area of the virus?
We've not identified the UK strain in Virginia that has been identified in other states. Our state lab, DCLS, has had a strong genetic mapping program that's been ongoing in the central region. They did identify a variant from the Midwest that seemed to have a little bit more virulence. And given this kind of third wave of disease that we're seeing, you know, particularly, you know, in the nursing homes, that question is being looked at. But to date, we've not identified that UK variant.
Well, about his vaccination, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How are you going to fast track this once we get the, it seems like it'd take a lot of people to inoculate the number of people who need to be inoculated. I mean, how are we set up to do that?
Sure. So we started efforts. This is our fourth full week, and have started efforts with clinics hosted by the Health Department throughout the district. We started with Phase One A healthcare workers. We're working our way through that group and crossing over into Phase One B. In Phase One A, basically have two large population segments, and we were trying to reach healthcare workers, and then people in skilled nursing facilities and congregate living facilities. The folks in skilled nursing facilities have been managed by a CVS and Walgreens federal partnership that's providing onsite vaccinations to both staff and residents. So that's work concurrently with our Health Department efforts. So that's been, that's been great. The other thing that we need to do, public health can't vaccinate the entire population on their own, so we need to leverage all of the great community partnerships that we've grown over the course of years, and those include our healthcare systems, federally qualified health centers, pharmacies, private practices. All of those groups are going to be integral in getting vaccine out into our communities. Current efforts are limited somewhat by inventory, so there's only so much vaccine to go around, and we're trying to get it into everyone's arms as quickly as possible in that tiered fashion. The state talked about today on the governor's press conference about setting up large-scale regional fixed areas where vaccine could be distributed six to seven times a week. So that's one of the mechanisms that the state's looking at to try to ramp up delivery of vaccine. Likewise, our healthcare partners are, you know, all participants with vaccine through all of these phases. We're blessed to have four different health systems within the district. Bath Community Hospital, Carillion Hospital in the South, we have Augusta Health, the central region, and then Centerra, Rockingham, in the northern region, and all of those hospital systems have committed to helping with vaccine efforts as well. So I think it's going to be a real group, joint, community effort to get, you know, vaccine out as quickly as possible to our populations. I think we're off to a good start. These vaccines are a little bit different than vaccines that we typically work with. The storage requirements for the Pfizer vaccine is ultra-cold storage. They all come in multi-dose vials, which are a little more challenging to work with because once you open the vial, you only have about six hours for the Moderna vaccine to be able to give all of the vaccines. So logistically, there's a lot of planning that goes into setting up the clinics so that we don't waste any of the dosages, but we're learning how to work with that. We're learning how to plan these clinics. We're learning how to schedule them. Importantly, I think we're learning how to communicate broadly with the entire population about what we're doing. And we had a meeting at two o'clock today with a lot of the PIOs from around the district to help us with community messaging. So I think we're off to a good start, but it's certainly a large and daunting undertaking.
Well, for each individual shot, it's going to take a minimum, what, twenty minutes? Because they have to sit for fifteen minutes to make sure they don't have a reaction or something like that?
Right. So for each of the shots, people need to be observed after the shot generally for fifteen minutes. So that's, you know, fifteen minutes of observation. We started probably our largest scale clinic today at the Convos Center in JMU, and our throughput from kind of registration to delivery of the shot was about eight minutes. So in general, I think we try to get people through that process in about, you know, eight to ten minutes, and then have them waiting for that fifteen minutes of observation.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
Dr. Carnegie, in this four-week period of time that the vaccine has been available, how many individuals have received both, and how many have received one?
Well, and everyone's just received one. So the Moderna vaccine is on a twenty-eight-day secondary schedule, so we'll be starting second doses for that first groupage next week. We've probably delivered, just health departments alone, I would estimate, coming up on twenty-five hundred to three thousand or so vaccines, and we're kind of ramping up efforts, you know, as we go along. I'd have to look and see how many our healthcare partners have done. By and large, the healthcare systems have taken care of all of their hospital employees and all of their affiliated practices. So we're working on non-affiliated healthcare workers, home health workers, others who fall into that One A healthcare worker category.
I'm just trying to get some perspective of the number of people in the region as a whole, and what percentage of those folks have been vaccinated to this point?
Sure. We have approximately three hundred thousand people in Central Shenandoah Health District, which is, you know, Rockingham in the north to Rockbridge in the south and west of Bath and Highlands. And I'd have to look and see how many vaccines our community partners have done to give you a percentage-wise. It's a small percentage at this point, but, you know, we've got to, we've got to start somewhere. One thing that we'll be introducing next week is delivery of vaccine to non-health departments, non-healthcare systems. So we have ten pharmacies within the district that are going to be distributors for Moderna vaccine. They're starting their first. They're starting their first delivery next, next week. The week before, we introduced delivery of vaccines to federally qualified health centers. We have three in the area, one in Rockingham, one in Rockbridge, and one in Highlands. And they've been able to provide vaccines to their staff. They also get, are getting started with community efforts. Our intent with the Phase 1B population groups, which now has been expanded to include not only over seventy-five-year-olds, but over sixty-five-year-olds. With the governor's announcement this afternoon is that we would look towards a lot of these community partners to help us with efforts on the senior side. And then the health department would concentrate on the essential worker groupages. So kind of divide and conquer that work.
Detective Lee. Thank you very much for this very important information. I'm going to need to go ahead and cut the conversation. And Dr. Carnegie, thank you for always being available to us. We certainly appreciate the fact that you're willing to speak to any one of us at any time.
More than welcome. Thank you all for your support.
If you'd like to stay, you, you may. But thank you for taking time out of your day to give us an update.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are on break and everyone is to return at 6:25 PM.
Mayor Oaks, Brenda Mead. During this discussion period, should we not be talking about the expiration of this draft?
We are already over scheduled, Councilmember Mead, and I'm trying to keep us on schedule. We are voting on this issue, so we can certainly discuss it during the regular meeting. But at this time, we need to go ahead and take a break so then we can come back into the work session. And I, for one, need a break. So with that, we are now on break. Okay, we are now back from break. And the next item is a discussion of timing and format of city council retreats. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item is on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Mead, and I defer to her.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. This is Councilwoman Mead. I, I was disappointed that the city council retreat was postponed once again. The, we, we attempted to begin scheduling this retreat in August. We each had individual meetings with a consulting firm to talk about what we wanted to get from these, this retreat and, and continued to move forward on December eighth to, to hold dates open for city council retreat. And, and then on December thirteenth, postponement was announced by, by the mayor because there was no interest in having a retreat. It just seems that this is an important issue. There are barriers to our communications. And I think a retreat is an important way to, to reduce those barriers.
Okay, I'll go ahead and say a few words and then I'm going to sit back and listen to everyone else. Essentially, the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, had reached out to me to make a decision concerning the retreat in relation to COVID. Because COVID has, of course, affected everything for us. He apparently had received a correspondence stating that the retreat needed to be in person in order to be effective. And otherwise, if it was not going to be in person, then there would be no interest in attending. There was also a correspondent saying that it needed to be Zoom. And if it were not Zoom and in person, that particular member did not have an interest in attending. And in order for it to be effective, all council members really need to be able to attend. So due to that reason, it was postponed. It's not taken off the table altogether. We can certainly come back and look at it at another date. But I would like to hear from you all on when you would like to have the retreat.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I, for one, I for one am looking forward to a retreat. But I'm also one of the ones that I feel quite strongly, and I, and, and Ms. Mead, you and I've had a conversation. And I feel quite strongly that all of us need to be in the same room so that we can talk and look at each other in the eye. This thing about doing this kind of crap, excuse my, whatever, it, you know, it just not, you have to be able to look at somebody in the eye. Case in point, the gentleman sitting right back there. All of us, when we first did, were looking for our attorney. I thought both of the gentlemen, or three of them, I thought all of them, the two of them were really good, almost on the same level. But when I got to meet them face to face, eye to eye, and I could look at their expressions, I could feel the difference. To me, that made all the difference in the world, for me. And I just really think that be able to be in the same room with somebody and to look them in the eye and to get the, to get the feel of them is how you can, you know, you can make a really, really sound decision. Another point, you know, that's just my feeling. I mean, you may totally disagree with me and that's fine. But I also think very, very much so is that I think on a Zoom meeting, especially when we're not having, we don't really get along that well, it seems like to begin with, is that not being able to sit across from somebody, you'll say a lot of different things that you might not say to somebody if you're not looking at, looking at them five foot or six foot away. That's just me. I could be wrong, but that's my feeling.
Anyone else?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I don't have a problem with it being a mixed meeting. And, and the more I use Zoom, the more that I've come to realize that, you know, it's, it's a great platform. And, and depending on how we're all set up, I think that it could be just as good as being in person. And, and, and personally, I understand why somebody would have not want to be in a meeting in person right now with COVID. You know, if, if we all get our shots, that's great. We can all do, sit down and do it together. But we, we keep putting this off and we're not getting along that great. And like you said, it'd be better to have something where we can all try to hash out some of our problems now instead of keep kicking it down the road. You know, I, I just think that, and I, I would just like to see us work together a little bit better, you know? And it's all of us. It ain't, it ain't any one of us that's not causing problems. So I just want to, you know, I just, I think that we all need to try to do something to make our working relationship better because it's not, it's, it's hard on the staff, it's hard on, it's hard on everybody else. It's hard on each one of us.
I don't, I really, I, I'm looking for, I don't think we're that far off. I mean, I, for one, I've had, I've finished up, I've had all, both my COVID shots as of yesterday at eight o'clock. I was really worried about today how I was going to feel because I've heard sometimes that second shot can be a doozy. And I had a little bit of issues last night, but I feel great today. But we're not that far off, I don't think, from getting those shots. And I really do think that's going to, can be an opportunity where we can get all seven of us in the same room and we can look at each other, talk and just hash it out.
I tell you right now, I don't think that, me personally, I probably won't get the shot until summer. I don't, I don't think the shots are going to be here. One thing, I just think as, as far as, is given, the logistics of giving the shots is going to be a lot more than what, you know, because you, you figure, you, you're talking thirty minutes a person pretty much to give a shot. So I, I don't think that we're going to get the shots that soon.
I was out in twelve minutes.
But you're a pharmacist, you know, you, I mean, you've got, you've got, you've got the shot. You know, the rest of us won't get it. I'm in tier, I'm, I'm 1C, I think, or something like that.
1C, though, you're coming up soon.
Mr. Rosenberg, I wish Dr. Carnegie was still here. The leaders of localities, are they bumped up in the?
There's a category, a subcategory in 1C for officials necessary for continuity of government. And I don't know with certainty, but I imagine that, I anticipate that I myself will be in that subcategory and that members of the governing body of a locality would be as well. But that, that will be at the very end of 1C.
All right.
I think food handlers are before politicians.
Any other comments?
I, I, this is Brenda Mead again. I, I'd just like to add that I'm disappointed that one member of council would, would prevail in a decision that really should involve a discussion amongst all of us. And so, you know, if the, if the general feeling is that we don't need to have a retreat until May, then I guess we'll just continue as we are.
Well, the decision was made per the request of the administration. And it needed to be made in a very timely fashion, which the decision was already made by everyone from the notifications that were received on who all was willing to attend if it was COVID, excuse me, if it was a hybrid Zoom or if it was a full Zoom or if it was all in person. And again, to be effective, we're all going to need to, to participate.
Mayor Oaks, I was, I was just notified that the meeting was not going to happen. I was not given, I, I told my preference was I would do anything to make the meeting work.
I hope it happens.
You know, but I'm just saying, I was, I, I, I was just, I just got, said that the meeting was off. I mean, it was.
May was just mentioned. Is that a time that you all would be interested in taking a look at as far as rescheduling the retreat?
May's fine.
May's busy for us. I mean, city council-wise, that's May, April, May is really busy with budget and all that other stuff, too.
Maybe that's the time we need it. Well, do you have another date in mind?
Well, I mean, if we're not, if we can't do it Zoom, I mean, you know, it's just going to have to wait till we all get the shots. You know, so I mean, that's, that's, anyway.
Any other thoughts on a date? All right, well, I've heard May. So, Mr. Rosenberg, can you start trying to coordinate some dates in May?
I, I can, I guess. It's not clear to me that there's a consensus amongst council to, for that date. Or, or for, or for the manner, I mean, is it?
We still may have Zoom at that time. Point well taken.
I think we just ought to table the discussion then.
Yeah, okay. We'll table the discussion for another meeting. It's not off the table. But hopefully, we'll still be able to come together for the retreat. All right. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion of access to nominations committee meetings. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item also is on the agenda at the request of Ms. Mead, and I defer to her.
Thank you again, Mr. Rosenberg. This should take not much time, I hope, anyway. There shouldn't be a lot of reason for discussion. I had requested of the nominations committee on December eighteenth that they make accommodation for me to attend and participate in the nominations committee meetings via the Zoom platform, and I did not get a response, and so I would like one today.
Members of the nomination committee, do you have any comments?
Mr. Claffey, you're going to need to unmute your.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
The, this issue did come up and I believe it got funneled over to City Attorney Doug Gwynn, who sent a letter out explaining this matter that I would appreciate if you would discuss and maybe we could get some clarification from Mr. Gwynn as, as to the, I guess there's a conflict whether all meetings should be Zoomed or if we just make an accommodation for a candidate who is unable to attend in person. And I guess it, it was very much gray area, and that's why I went to the, to Doug Gwynn's office and, and I really prefer him to weigh in on this.
Mr. Gwynn, your services are requested.
I always love a hot bench. Go for it. Glad to answer any questions.
I'm not sure that Mr. Gwynn heard the comments of Mr. Claffey. So perhaps he would like to repeat what he's, what he seeks.
Councilmember Claffey, can you repeat your statement or question?
Mr. Gwynn, we made comment to the fact that in December, we got a request from Councilwoman Mead for a Zoom accommodation for a nominations committee meeting. And I was a little taken back because I thought the accommodation applied to the candidates who were applying for the job. And I got that idea from, from the letter that you'd sent out afterwards. So I was just asking you to weigh in and, and explain how this could possibly work.
How it could work legally?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's no legal impediments to the nominations committee allowing another council member to attend. And as you know, under the Freedom of Information Act, because the nominations committee is a committee created by city council and of city council, then a member of council may actually sit in and observe, may not participate, but may observe in the committee, committee's proceedings. In terms of physically, I have no idea how it would work, other than it's no different, seems to me, in concept than what already occurs on a hybrid basis here with city council, including during a closed meeting of city council. So I'd be glad to understand your questions better or take a different version of it or variation. I don't, I don't believe that, in my view, the nominations committee has an obligation legally to grant the request, but I believe that it may.
And the accommodation would, would be granted to an applicant for a position that's unable to attend the interview in person, correct?
That's not what I requested, Mr. Claffey. Let me read my email to you. I respectfully request that the nominations committee make reasonable accommodation and allow me to participate in the nominations committee meetings, includes, including closed sessions via the Zoom platform. That's verbatim what my request was. And I just want to, I just want a simple yes or no from you.
I, I don't have the answer and I, I would prefer to talk with the nominations committee in a meeting. And we unfortunately have had difficulty scheduling said meeting. I don't want to make a determination by myself without the input of my fellow councilmen.
Councilmember Holmes.
Brenda, you're just asking to be able to sit in on the meetings, not participate, but just sit in and listen, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And you have been able to do that in the past, correct?
I, I did attend one meeting, Mr. Claffey, but when you invited folks being interviewed to remove their masks in, in the, in the room, that made me uncomfortable. And I made the decision that I could not attend those meetings in person.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Okay, so Brenda, you, you, you feel uncomfortable, I understand that. But I mean, and I reckon, because I had a, I had an individual, I had a citizen ask me and you responded to her as well. And about, you know, she said, what about masks? And I said, ma'am, we wear masks in council. When we speak or we eat, we take the mask off or take one loop off. I said, if you have an issue with that. I said, if you have an issue with that, I would advise you to take the precedent set by the governor, who, when he holds a news conference in a room with people, he takes his mask off. So, but I mean, if you don't want to be in, you know, in the room with that, you know, I reckon my question, and maybe that would be a legal thing, is if we would open the, the meeting to you as a Zoom participant, then that automatically would, that would say, okay, you've opened it to a council lady, councilman, then that means automatically you're gonna have to open it up Zoom-wise to every other candidate or whatever. If you do it for one, you do it for all. Is that not a legal ramification, or I'm just asking?
Councilmember would have, actually has a right under the Freedom of Information Act to attend those meetings and observe. Because she has a right doesn't mean that anyone else has a right. It extends only to the council member or the member of the public body.
I understand, but I'm, but I'm saying if we.
Just because she's allowed to attend virtually or remotely does not mean that that establishes a right in anyone else. Now, you may consider it establishes sort of an expectation, but not a legal right.
Well, I, I wasn't getting at that. What I was saying is the precedent to attend, whether it be a, if a councilman sits in on a Zoom meeting, then any candidate, any candidate, whether they had a physical disability or whatever, could say, I'm only coming if you do it by Zoom.
Not any candidate, no, because it's the council member who has the right in the Freedom of Information Act, not someone you're interviewing.
Okay, all right.
I understand, I understand your question. It's a fair question, very fair.
All right.
Councilmember Holmes.
But, you know, I would not want to eliminate a good candidate just because they couldn't attend, or, or they had some reason, like health-wise, that they were afraid, you know. I would not want to eliminate anybody, because there's a lot of people, a lot of people out there that are really afraid of the virus, but would be good people to serve on our commissions, you know, so.
If they had, I mean, if they had a medical reason, whatever, absolutely, I want, I want them. If they have a medical reason, and they have a doctor says, you know, they cannot come in here.
Right now, just, just the virus itself is a medical reason. I mean, I, I mean, to me, it is, anyway. I would, I would, and, and I'm, I'm in a mask all the time. I've, I've gotten so used to it. I mean, I've pulled 12-hour shifts sometimes with a mask on, and, and so, I mean, I, I just.
I do it work, too, Terry, and I said, if I, when, when this thing is over, I'm gonna have the biggest mask burning party you could ever find.
See, I got them to match my clothes. But anyway, but you know, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think that I would want to eliminate anybody's, any opportunity to get a good candidate for any of our boards, just because they were afraid to come in because they didn't want to take their mask off.
This is Councilmember Mead. I'm sorry to interrupt, Terry, but it looks like we're going long on this. I had hoped that it would be a pretty simple and easy decision, and I am disappointed that it cannot be made by the chairman of the committee unless he has a meeting. And I can't attend the meeting unless I can attend via Zoom. So it's sort of a catch-22 situation, and it, it appears to me that that resistance is, is, well, I, I'm just, I can't explain it.
Councilmember Mead, I'd like to ask you a question. If everybody were to keep their mask on, would you attend?
No, I would not. For the same reason that I will not attend city council meetings in the chambers. The, the, my, I don't feel I should have to explain what the medical reasons are for me, under the circumstances.
No one's asking.
Wish not, but, and yet, and yet I have this catch-22 that I can't attend the meetings until the committee has a meeting, and I can't, you know, it just seems like this is a fairly simple thing, and, and a reasonable accommodation to ask for, under the circumstances.
We are going long. Council, Councilmember Darby has a.
The only question I have right now is that to do the Zoom, obviously, we would need to be in chambers. And is that going to put any extra strain on city staff to accommodate with that? I mean, I wouldn't think that it would be, they do such a great job, but I just want to know.
My understanding of Ms. Darby is actually it would not need to be done in chambers. It could be done in whatever room. The committee meeting was held in with the simple use of a laptop, because the purpose is, as I understand, Councilmember Mead's request is simply to permit her participation, and her participation alone, or her attendance alone of, of the meeting. And so I would think that, you know, if a laptop could be present, you know, at one end of the conference table, if the meeting was held in the caucus room, for example, that I would imagine Ms. Simmons would be able to assist with making the connection between that laptop and the Zoom platform.
Okay, we are running over on time. So from what I'm hearing, the nominating committee is going to have a discussion amongst themselves, and then the chairman, Councilmember Claffey, you will reach out to Councilmember Mead?
Yes, that would be fine, and I think our next scheduled meeting is the first Tuesday of February.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, a closed meeting for one, discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city, two, discussion of prospective candidates for interim city attorney, three, discussion of prospective candidates for city attorney, four, consultation and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to legal consideration and discussion involving specific pending litigation claims. And what number am I on? One, two, three, four, five. We have a lot. Consultation and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to legal considerations and discussions involving specific land use and development matters. I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
So moved. Do I have to, if you can read it? Yeah, hold on.
Off of the agenda briefing and not the agenda, I would suggest.
This is Councilmember Mead. I'd be happy to make the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Mead.
I move that council enter a closed meeting for one, discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city. Our discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the public body's bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Two, discussion of specific prospective candidates for employment or appointment as possible interim city attorney pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Three, discussion of specific prospective candidates for possible employment or appointment as city attorney pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Four, consultation and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to specific pending litigation slash claims pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. And five, consultation and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to specific land use and development matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we are now in closed session. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Mayor Oakes?
Councilmember Holmes.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters is identified, and the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Darby. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby? Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The work session meeting is adjourned, as well as the closed meeting. We will come back to a regular meeting at 7:30. As mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and StreamLive on the city's website, so the members of the public may hear our meeting. This meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes?
Here.
Ms. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye, here.
Ms. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
I've confirmed all council members are present.
I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Claffey, Dahl, and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform, as is Clerk of Council Faith Simmons. Additionally, on the Zoom platform, we will have Library Director Sarah Scrogus and Melanie Barnes, a representative of Level 3 Communications. All other city employees and officials are participating in person in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members by city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone, at the appropriate time, may call 844-854-2222, and when prompted, enter the access code 619-358-hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public is a time for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v.a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted, excuse me, conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation of certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D-2020-04, as extended by city council ordinance number 2020-24. All right. With that said, I would like to ask everyone, when you come into the city council chambers, and when you walk around city council or in the, the chambers itself, please wear a mask. We want to practice social distancing, and if need be, there are bathrooms if you need to wash your hands. We also have hand sanitizer outside the chamber doors. And with that, I'd also like to remind the city council members, if you would like to speak and be recognized, please recognize the mayor, and I'll make a point to recognize you. All right. With that, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would like, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and health for all.
All right, thank you. The next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight it will be Councilmember Holmes.
This is more of a, it's not so much, I guess it's part prayer, part statement, but, you know, like, with the pandemic is raging around, it's affecting every aspect of our life. We all know somebody who has contracted COVID-19 and has disrupted our way of life, the way we raise our kids, take care of our elderly, how we work and play. This, you know, this in itself would put a strain on all of us, and it seems a lot of us are losing our civility. These are chaotic times for all of us. Last week, during certification of the vote for President-elect Biden by the Electoral College, an insurrection was led by people who had been led to believe the election had been stolen from them. They invaded the House, houses of Congress to take action and take back their government. A lot of people gave up their lives because they were led to believe the election was being stolen from them. We all know that we have, we all know words have consequences and need to measure what we say as elected officials by spreading falsehoods over a period of time and allow people to be radicalized to the point that they would oppose the results of a free and fair democratic election. The peaceful transition of power has always been a hallmark of our democracy for 200 years. The keys were turned over to the next elected official. It is our responsibility as elected officials to announce what has occurred in Washington and around the country. We take an oath and we're sworn in to uphold the Constitution of the State of Virginia and the United States of America, and it is our responsible, responsibility to speak out when they are threatened. We need to communicate with each other, find the things that unite us, and work on things that divide us. It is not just a Washington problem, it's a nationwide problem, and we all need to come together and solve these problems together. And I'm sorry, I'm not very good at speeches.
That was nice. Thank you. All right, the next item is the mayor's report. The first item under the mayor's report is a proclamation for Deputy Kanan Kara. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Deputy Kanan Kara. Whereas Deputy Kanan Kara's end of watch was December 21st, 2020, in the line of duty. And whereas, in November 2018, Deputy Kanan Kara and then Deputy Ryan Insana officially started in the City of Stanton Sheriff's Office after an intense five-week training session, where both were trained and certified in the proper techniques and tactics to safely locate explosives and explosive-related materials. And whereas Deputy Kanan Kara and her partner Captain Ryan Insana were often called to assist surrounding jurisdictions in locating possible explosive devices and firearms. And whereas Deputy Kanan Kara was known for her friendly demeanor, never meeting a stranger, not having a mean bone in her body, and her love for everyone, especially the children she encountered. especially the children she encountered. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that we do hereby honor the life and service of Deputy Canine Kara. And be it furthermore proclaimed that our great respect and sympathies are extended to her handler and partner, Captain Ryan Insana and his family, in the City of Stanton Sheriff's Office. Signed Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor." It is an honor to be able to read this proclamation for Deputy Canine Kara, but it is also heartbreaking to read this proclamation to honor Deputy Canine Kara. Kara died in the line of duty serving this community. She was by far the sweetest and most gentle canine that I'd ever met. And our hearts go out to her family, Captain Ryan Insana, his wife and children because they helped raise her. And my heart goes out to the City of Stanton because this truly is a great loss for our community. Is there anyone here that would like to accept the proclamation? Okay, there will be a memorial service, and I'll present the proclamation at that time. But if you would please join me in honoring Deputy Canine Kara. Okay, the next item. Several of us attended a virtual Virginia Municipal League's budget update for the state, which the news was not as bad as I had expected. But of course, COVID has affected everyone's budget across the state of Virginia, so we're not alone. Several of us on the council, myself, as well as councilmember Mead and councilmember Claffey, attended the Zoom COVID-19 emergency response meeting. Dan Lehman with the community fund, excuse me, the Community Foundation, he oversees this coalition. They haven't met in a while, so it was nice to get an update on all the different opportunities that are available to our citizens that are in the greatest need. There's also a push for the community leaders to get the word out about the vaccinations, and that was one subject that was discussed in great detail. So I think, Mr. Rosenberg, you're going to be coordinating with Waynesboro as well as Augusta County to see if we can get something put together.
Yes, and Lee Catlin and Morgan Smith are already working with the communications professionals in the other localities on that project.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Rosenberg and myself, we attended the Zoom Stanton Downtown Development Association meeting. I serve as their liaison. Greg Bean, the executive director, he said the merchants were very pleased with the holiday season. They were very excited about the Saturdays in December, which consisted of strolling holiday characters along with the holiday market, and they're excited to offer this again next year. They wanted me to advise everyone that they will be updating their shopping guide that's found on their website. The celebration of holiday lights, I serve as their unofficial liaison, they were very excited that they had one of the largest holiday light displays ever in the park this year. So it sounds like we are on the, even though we have the COVID, we are on the road to recovery when it comes to helping each other out and trying to dig out from any financial strains that this COVID-19 has put upon our community. All right. With that, I'll entertain any additional items by members of council.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I just want to amplify a little bit what Councilmember Holmes was speaking of earlier. On January 21, 2017, I boarded a bus in Stanton along with my daughter to join a million women and men in Washington, DC at the largest single-day protest in US history. 4.6 million people around the US and the world joined those peaceful demonstrations. On January 6, 2021, I watched in horror and tears as a mob overtook the Capitol, incited by Donald J. Trump and observed by a crowd of 30,000 supporters of his campaign of lies and unproven allegations called Stop the Steal. The contrast between those two events could not possibly be more stark. On January 21, 2017, churches in our Capitol opened their doors to give protesters a place to gather and organize. Businesses welcomed those who joined the historic march. On January 6, 2021, churches locked their doors, hotels and restaurants closed, and businesses boarded their windows in anticipation of violence and destruction. When I looked around me in 2017 at the Women's March, I was surrounded by women and men, sometimes in pink hats, carrying banners and signs. The atmosphere was a celebration of our voices and our right to speak out. On January 6, 2021, I saw on my television the absolute mayhem wrought by violent people carrying plastic handcuffs, pitchforks, and the flags and symbols of white supremacy and racism, wearing combat fatigues, and screaming obscenities and ugly threats. The speakers at the Women's March in 2017 were fiery and passionate, but no one advocated rebellion, civil war, or violence. On January 21, 2017, I never feared for my life or for the life of my daughter. No buildings were smeared with human feces. Not a single law enforcement officer received life-threatening injuries. Not one person died on January 21, 2017. On January 6, 2021, five people died, including a law enforcement officer. Countless were injured. The lives of the vice president, members of Congress, innocent staff members, and journalists were threatened. In the aftermath, a law enforcement officer on duty at the Capitol that day took his own life. And yesterday, a participant in the insurrection committed suicide as well. Hundreds have been arrested, and hundreds more will be brought to justice. After January 21, 2017, I have never felt the need to deny or hide the fact that I was there. I am and will always be proud that I could show my daughter the raw strength of her sisters and the awesome power of our democracy. On January 6, the mob was spurred by unproven and spurious claims of a stolen election made by a president and certain members of Congress who wished to disenfranchise millions of Americans who legally voted for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. The Constitution gives us the right to speak and to assemble peacefully. I would go further and say that speaking out to support or to criticize those we elect to public office is our duty. There are those in Stanton who are calling for the removal of any member of city council, who attended the protest on January 6, or who has been vocal in their support of the Stop the Steal effort. Please let me be clear, I do not support such efforts. To do so would disenfranchise the hundreds of citizens of Stanton who put their faith in the integrity of our electoral system and chose those who gathered this evening to conduct the business of the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional comments by members of council?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dahl.
Carolyn Dahl.
I certainly agree with the heartfelt comments made by Mr. Holmes and Ms. Mead. And I am, I am appalled at what happened. I never thought in my lifetime that I would see our own American citizens trying to destroy our government. But because I'm always an optimist, I think we've learned that we have let people go and not been accountable in the past. We have not abided by the rule of law, and this is what happens. So I think that people will be held accountable, and that's how it should be when there's violence, destruction, and death. And I look forward to every one of them being found and arrested and tried. And so I'm also hopeful that we can come to a new day when we quit killing black people because of the color of their skin. And there's been too much of that going on throughout the nation, and we just need to say enough. And I am, I for one, am at that place. I'm going to call out anytime I see any kind of racial inequality or hatred or anything, because we need to get past this. And I think if we do those things, I think we can come out a better country on the other side. So that's my thoughts on what's happened in the nation's capital. And to just add something that shows the kind or face of humanity, I would like to send out a special thank you to Jane Manning, who for years has helped our citizens with mental illness. And she has worked tirelessly on their behalf, and she is just recently retired from the Board of Valley Supportive Housing. And so there was a nice article in the newspaper about her, and I just wanted to recognize her and to thank her for her years of dedicated service to helping improve the quality of life for our citizens that are troubled with mental health issues. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments by councilmembers?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I would like to say that, you know, first, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy 2021. You know, every new year, I always think that it is a good time to regain focus, and I hope that this council can do just that as we work together for the betterment of Stanton in the months ahead. And after watching some of our major cities across this country burned for months, and the events that unfolded in Washington, DC last week, I want to be very clear that I have never and will never support or condone any riot where there is violence, destruction of property, or looting. And a few weeks ago, my mother, who is the smartest and the kindest woman that I know, she sent me this poem. And I've done some searching, and it's, the author is unknown to the best that I can find. But I want to read it tonight because I hope that it helps all of us and this council remember to stay focused on doing the work of Stanton as we move forward. And this is called "The Lesson of the Eagle and the Crow." The only bird that dares to peck an eagle is the crow. The crow sits on the eagle's back and bites its neck. The eagle does not respond nor fight with the crow. It does not spend time or energy on the crow. Instead, he just opens his wings and begins to rise higher in the heavens. The higher the flight, the harder it is for the crow to breathe, and eventually the crow falls off due to lack of oxygen. Learn from the eagle, and don't fight the crows, just keep ascending. They might be along for the ride, but soon they'll fall off. Do not allow yourself to succumb to distractions. Keep your focus on the things above and continue rising. And I just would also like to say that, you know, the COVID crisis, I think it is something that I know that just this week alone, several of us have been made aware of friends, families that have lost loved ones, and I would just like to say, let's please keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else?
Just real quick.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I just wanted to say as well that I don't think any member of this council has ever or will ever condone any kind of violence, political violence, or any other kind. As Amy said, the kinds that happened this past summer, where Washington State, the areas burned, that was not right, never was right. I'm sure none of us agree with what happened in Washington, DC, where people rushed the seat of our Capitol, the seat of our government that cannot be condoned. And I'm sure, and I'm hoping all of us think, that the people that violated that Capitol will be tracked down and hunted and brought to justice. You know, our government cannot withstand that kind of political violence. Enough of that. The other thing that I would like to say is, this city, this past week, lost another one of our business icons, and I'm sure everybody remembers Mr. Elwood Cash, that passed away earlier this week, was the owner and the patron of Wright's Dairy Right, a family-owned business since 1952. And the children are still continuing his legacy and continuing that restaurant. But I just wanted everybody to be aware that we have lost another one of our great citizens, and just know that we will miss him. And going in and seeing that smiling face behind that counter, so be it.
He will be missed indeed. All right, the next item is the approval of minutes. We have three different sets of minutes, so I will ask that they each be voted on individually. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the special meetings of December 1 and 8, 2020.
Okay.
Councilmember Holmes.
I'm sorry. I move to approve the minutes of special meeting 12-1 and 12-8, 12-7 and 12-18. You said you wanted to...
Yeah.
Okay. I moved to approve the work session agenda, I mean, the regular meeting of 12-1.
The special meeting?
The special meeting, yes.
December, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the special meetings of December 1 and 8, 2020. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll now accept a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of December 10, 2020. I'll now accept a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of December 10, 2020.
Uh, Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda and regular meeting of, uh, of 12, uh, 10, right? 12-10, yeah.
2020.
2020.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve work session and regular meeting minutes of December 10, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of December 17th and 18th, 2020.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I'm moving to approve the special work session of 12, uh, 17 and 18 as presented.
Right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the special meeting minutes of December 17th and 18th, 2020. Is there a second? Mayor Oaks, I second. All right, that's, um, Councilmember Darby. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to our regular meeting agenda, and the first item is Item A, "A Public Hearing in Consideration of a Request by John and Margaret Pearson to Rezone 919 Middlebrook Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial Conditional to R-3 Medium Density Residential Conditional." Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor Rodney Rose, the city's senior planner, will present this item.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Oaks, City Council members. Um, as the mayor noted in the introduction, uh, the owners of this property, 919 Middlebrook Avenue, are requesting a rezoning from, uh, light industrial to medium density residential conditional. It's approximately 10, 11 and 1/2 acres, and it's between Middlebrook Park and Tannahill Week neighborhood. The property was annexed into the city in 1948 and had already been developed at that time. Currently, there are four residential units on the 11 and 1/2 acres. And the, the Pearsons acquired the property in 1979, and now they're, um, pursuing this rezoning in an attempt to make the zoning, um, of the property correspond with the actual use of the property. Um, a- as I noted, it's zone industrial at this time, and they're having some issues with insurance due to that conflict in zoning and, um, use of the property. The applicant has proffered that there'd be no more than 10 units on the entire 11 and 1/2 acre tract. So obviously, that's less than, um, a, a unit per acre, um, which is far lower than we have in any of our residential districts. Um, and in the standard R-3 zoning district, there'd be up to 20 units per acre. Uh, staff has reviewed the proposed rezoning, um, and there are some issues with further development of this property. There's, um, issues regarding to access, and also to water and sewer may not be adequate for future residential development. However, a- as I noted, the intent of this rezoning is to get the current use to comply with the zoning. They do not have any specific plans for additional development. And if they did at some time, um, develop this property, they would need to either go through a site plan process or subdivision platting approval process, where all of those issues would have to be addressed. Um, the surrounding zoning, um, is R-3, um, medium density residential, R-4 high density residential, and I-1 light industrial district. The General Land Use and Development Guide Future Land Use Map, Stanton, Virginia Conference Plan 2018 to 2040 designates this area as medium density residential. So obviously, this proposed rezoning, uh, is more in consistent with the conference plan than the current industrial zoning designation. At this meeting on December 17, 2020, the planning commission considered the request and conducted a public hearing on the matter. No one spoke in opposition to the request. We did have, um, uh, one, um, neighbor call in to staff and had some concerns about increased traffic on some of the substandard roads. However, those substandard roads would have to be upgraded and extended if this property was to be further developed. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission on a five to zero vote recommended unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning with the condition proffered by the applicant. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to Item B, "A Public Hearing in Consideration of an Amendment to Title 18 Zoning, Chapter 18.120 Yard Building Setback and Open Space Exceptions, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will present this item as well.
Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you again. This is a proposed amendment, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to address uh, through lots, which we kind of define as lots that have road frontage on both sides, you know, kind of parallel. Back in 2018, actually December 20, 2018, staff brought this to the planning commission along with a couple other zoning text changes, recommendations to help, um, allow some of these corner properties to be developed more fully. And the planning commission recommended, uh, conducted public hearings on a couple of those and recommended approval of those, and those eventually were adopted by city council. And, and one of those was, um, a relaxation of the requirements on corner lots. However, the planning commission was not comfortable with this proposed amendment at that time. A- and I, I like to back up that, um, when you, our zoning ordinance defines a front yard as the area between, um, the face of the principal structure, i.e. house, and the right of way. And when you have a through lots, where you have parallel streets, everything is a front yard in front of the house or what most of it was considered the back of the house, because that would be considered a front yard also. And accessory structures are not permitted in our current ordinance in a front yard. So in those particular situations, if you don't have room on your side yard, which is just that little area between, and of course you have to meet setbacks, side yard setbacks, between your house and that side yard, you cannot put an accessory structure such as a garage, a shed, or even a pool on your property. So, um, we get questions about this several times a year. So we brought back for, um, commission a couple months ago. I would note that, um, our current ordinance is more restrictive than the surrounding jurisdictions. And, um, the, the commission, um, looked at this back in November and directed staff to proceed with the amendment and to schedule a public hearing. And they also asked for examples of through lots. So in your packet, uh, you have s- um, s- some maps, um, a diagram that staff, planning staff worked with the GIS specialists in the city to come up with those. And as you'll note, there are a lot of through lots in the city, and this is just an, an example of them. We did not try to find all of the through lots in the cities, but, uh, there are clearly dozens and dozens of lots that would benefit from an amendment. And I, I was a little surprised by, um, what I found out is because I thought this would address a lot of old subdivisions. Well, it does, but there's a lot of new subdivisions that also have the same, um, configuration with, um, parallel streets. So a- after staff looked at this again, uh, staff continues to believe that the language that, um, we proposed two years ago is still the best way to address this issue. Um, the, the language is here in your, in the briefing. Basically, if you have a through lots, the secondary front yard, which most people consider their backyard, you would be allowed to have an accessory structure if it met the same setback requirements as your house. And this is for residential, residential districts only, so you're basically looking at 25 to 30 foot setback from that, you know, uh, from both streets, basically. And I have looked at, um, uh, Waynesboro, Augusta County, um, Rockingham, and they have similar language in the ordinance. They kind of get it from a different, um, angle, but basically they end up at the same point as our proposed amendment. And the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this on December 17, 2020, and there were, uh, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and on a five to zero vote, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearings.
Are there any questions? All right, well, hearing none, uh, since, uh, both Item A and B are both land use uh, items to be considered, um, I'm going to combine both public hearings into one public hearing. So if you want to speak for or against Item A or Item B, uh, when I hit the gavel, please feel free to come to the podium to speak. And if we have anyone in the queue, Mr. Rosenberg, um, I'll direct you at that time to have them speak. Uh, when I bang the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing out, and then we will vote on each item individually. All right, with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to come to the podium to speak?
Daniel Hanson with Balzer and Associates, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the time tonight. I'm here representing John Margaret Pearson on, uh, item A. Uh, as the surveyor, uh, just wanted to reiterate, basically, what Rodney was saying about, uh, getting the zoning more in line with the current usage. Uh, the R-3 zoning is the only, is the, the most restrictive zoning that will allow for the four dwellings that are currently there. But obviously, the, my, the applicant's not necessarily trying to fully develop it as multifamily like some of the other properties that are surrounding it. That's why we're stretching it to the, to the 10. Again, there's not really, uh, there's no plan right now to do that. Um, there was, like, like Mr. Rhodes said, at Planning Commission, uh, some questions about access, but those would be addressed with any sort of site planning, subdivision platting, anything that might happen in the future. Um, I will say that there are the access points right now, um, yet the current right of ways are such, based on my, my research, the current right of ways would allow for an upgrade to the roads if necessary. Uh, but again, there's no plan for that at this time. I guess, uh, again, if you, if you, if anybody has any questions, I'll be, if I can't answer them, I'd be hap- more than happy to, uh, on behalf of the Pearsons.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Mr. Rosenberg.
There, there are no callers on the telephone line, Madam Mayor.
And with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion concerning Item A.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move the council approve the rezoning and adopt the ordinance as presented, rezoning 919 Middlebrook Avenue from one, from, uh, industrial one, light industrial, uh, conditional district to R-3 medium density residential district conditional as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Holmes. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. It leads us to Item number B, letter B. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I move that council adopt the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 18.120 to permit accessory structures on through lots as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember. Uh, which one? All right, Claffey.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? I would just like to say that, um, the thorough lots, this is a good thing. This will be a very good thing for the city. All right, hearing no further discussion, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
One second.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is Item C, "A Public Hearing in Consideration of the Non-Exclusive Franchise Ordinance for Fiber Optic Telecommunications Equipment and Other Facilities in the City." Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Jeff Johnston, the city's public works director, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's great to be here. A couple of months ago, we were approached by L-3 Communications, uh, asked if they could uh, use the public right of way to run additional fiber optic telecommunications and other equipment. My children tell me that that's a good thing and in the public interest. So we solicited for, and advertised and solicited bids for a 25-year, 10-year base plus three, five-year option franchise agreement, and we received one bid, uh, in response to that, which you have. And we are now prepared for a bid opening and further discussion.
In the envelope. All right, thank you. And this is the first time I've ever done this, so please bear with me. I'm sorry that I took the envelope from you earlier.
I had a very dramatic envelope delivery.
We missed it.
I will save it for the next one.
Ooh, there's a check. All right, let's see. All right, Mr. Rosenberg, I just have to read the summary of it.
That's correct.
All right. L-3 Communications of Virginia, Inc., Level 3 hereby submits this proposal bid of $100 for a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement with the city of Stanton, Virginia, in support of which Level 3 states as follows. And they have, all right, I guess I should go ahead and read the rest of it. All right, number one, Level 3 is a Virginia corporation authorized to do business in Virginia in a good standing. Two, Level 3 desires to place its fiber optic telecommunications equipment and facilities, the telecommunications facilities, within the public right of way within the city limits of Stanton in accordance with the terms and conditions specified in the accompanying telecommunications franchise agreement, Exhibit A heretofore, pursuant to the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, and the provisions of the City Code, Section 15.2-2100, 15.2-2101, and 56.462. Wherefore, Level 3 submits this bid for authorization to place its telecommunications facilities known as the telecommunications facilities within the city limits of Stanton, and for approval of the accompanying telecommunications franchise agreement submitted the 7th day of January 2021, Level 3 Communications of Virginia Incorporated. All right. So that's been done. Are there any other bids? You had indicated no. All right.
Madam Mayor, you may wish to invite members of the audience to come forward if they have bids to present.
All right, would anyone in the audience like to present a bid? All right, hearing none. I will declare the bidding closed. Next will be a public hearing. So I'll bang the gavel just like before, and if you are for or against this, please feel free to come to the podium, or we'll take your call on Zoom. With that, the public hearing is now open. Anyone?
Madam Mayor, I would note that Melanie Barnes, a representative of Level Communications, is on the Zoom platform available, I believe, by video, perhaps, I don't know whether she wishes to address council.
Hi, Madam Mayor, this is Melanie Barnes. As you said, I'm with Level Three Communications. I work in our right-of-way contract acquisition department, so I'm here with any questions anyone may have for me, but I obviously fully support this and help us bring services to those customers in your area that have requested them.
All right, well, thank you. Are there any other comments? Anyone on Zoom?
No callers on the line, Madam Mayor.
All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. And awarded the franchise. So it looks like, since there's only one bid, I have been instructed that Level Three Communications of Virginia Incorporated has won the bid.
Madam Mayor, in the agenda briefing, there is a motion.
I'm getting to that. I was following your other instructions. All right. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Holmes.
I move that city council adopt the franchise ordinance as presented granting Level Three a non-exclusive franchise to place telecommunication equipment and other facilities within the corporate limits of the City of Stanton as set forth in the ordinance and annex franchise agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, that was exciting. All right, the next item is item D, consideration of a request by Darren Pults, 371 National Avenue, for a variance to Title 17 subdivisions, section 17.15.180, size and shape of residential lots generally. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will present this item.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Oaks, city council members. As the mayor noted in the introduction, this is a request for a subdivision variance. The owner of the property is requesting this variance to the section that is spelled out in your briefing that prohibits elongated portions of a lot, the creation of lots with elongated portions to achieve either the necessary square footage or the necessary street frontage. Basically, we call these pipe stem lots. I've even heard in some jurisdictions, they call them lollipop lots. You know, we have just a little strip of land going back to a buildable area. Mr. Pults owns property at 371 National Avenue, which is near the intersection with New Hope Road. The property is zone R1 low-density residential. It was, it is about, it's actually a little over two acres in size, and this property was annexed into the city in 1986, and the majority of the lots in that area were platted in the county before that annexation. The owner acquired the property, and the current owner acquired the property in 2006. He is now requesting a variance so he can subdivide one lot off the back. I believe it's his intention to sell the existing house and the property around it to a family member and then to build a house in the back with separate access. The city staff reviewed this request and did not identify any issues. This property is unique. I mean, it's unique that it's two acres in the City of Stanton. It's also unique in that it's approximately 125 feet in width and over 700 feet in depth. So it's nearly six times as deep as it is wide. So if this property was up to be platted now in the city, it would not meet our current requirements and would not be approved. I'm talking about the entire two acres that he has now. We currently have a provision that a lot cannot be more than three times as deep as it is wide. So obviously, this is, you know, six times. I would note that there are, I believe, three other pipe stem lots in that same vicinity. I believe one is about two lots over, one's almost directly across the street. So this is not out of character with the area. I'm sure you've heard about zoning variances in the past, and the Code of Virginia has some very strict requirements on when you can grant a zoning variance. This is not a zoning variance, this is a subdivision variance, which is, just must meet the current local ordinance, and that is spelled out in the briefing as far as those provisions. As I stated, I do not believe this proposed division would be out of character with existing pattern established in the area. It is unique because of the shape and size. I would note in the R1 low-density residence, residential district, the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, approximately a third of an acre, and this is two acres. And I would note that the proposed division meets all other city code requirements, including minimum road frontage, and the proposed division creates a desirable building site and provides for better utilization of the property, and the owner has worked with staff on this. Usually when we get a request for pipe stem lots, the minimum road front requirement is 30 feet, and they would show a 30-foot strip all the way to the back of the property and then expand. He starts off, I think, with 52 feet at the street and then does expand as soon as he can with this proposed lot, so it kind of flares out very quickly. The Plan Commission considered this at their December 17th, 2020 meeting, and on five-zero votes, recommended approval of the variance. This is not a public hearing. I believe the owner is here in attendance if you have any questions for him, or, and obviously if you have any questions for me, I take those at this time.
All right, are there any questions? Would the owner like to say a few words? Only if you want. If you could come up to the microphone so our folks on Zoom can hear you. No pressure.
Thanks for the opportunity. Like I said, I'm not, the land's been in my family. My grandfather and grandmother owned it back in 1970, purchased it in 1972 or '74. I was born in '72, so that's really my, kind of like my home place. So like I said, the only, only use I get out of that land is mowing it, and the property in the back has actually got the best views, and it's actually up on a hill. So I was planning on trying to build something there and selling my house to possibly my brother-in-law, which is getting out of Marines in a year, and my sister. So that was the plan. But then, besides that, every lot around there is almost exactly like mine, however, everybody owns two or three lots per house, and of course, they got all theirs done when it was in the county, when it was annexed in 2006. My grandfather never did try to break it off. So I'm just trying to do that, but it's nothing out of character. And actually, I got, if you go down that street and you turn on New Hope Road, you'll see houses that's got less road frontage than what mine will have at 52 feet, like Rodney stated. But thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Darby.
I'd like to, on the, make a motion that on the basis that the subject property is unique in shape and size and proposed division will create a desirable building site, I move that council approve the requested variance to the subdivision standard as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Right. Councilwoman Darby, she got in there before you, Councilmember Holmes. All right, I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Holmes has second. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilwoman Dahl.
In an effort to cut down on that poor guy's mowing, I'm going to support this.
We could get you a goat.
He thanks you, Carolyn.
All right, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item E, a discussion in consideration of grant application to Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro, also known as CAPSOL. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Sarah Scrobis, the city's library director, will present this item, and she's participating on the Zoom platform.
Welcome.
Can't hear you, Sarah. You're showing his mood.
There, I thought I had unmuted, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, indeed.
Right, well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As you are aware, we reclosed the Stanton Library to the public and reverted to curbside service only effective December 16th due to rising COVID numbers in the area. One concern we've had throughout the pandemic has been the digital divide and computer access for residents who rely on the library to use the internet or other tools. Our library advisory board chair, Dr. Josh Howard, works for a neighboring library system, Jefferson Madison Regional Library, and he noted how they were circulating laptops for short-term use with their library's Wi-Fi, and we really love that idea. And so the Stanton Public Library submitted a grant proposal to the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro in December. The $2,000 request was granted for the library to purchase laptops to circulate to library cardholders to use the city Wi-Fi on our grounds outside for short-term loans so that patrons may access e-government, job resources, education opportunities, or even telehealth resources. We're coordinating with colleagues at other libraries about the details and with Stanton IT. The full grant application was included with the agenda packet for your review and consideration, but I'm also happy to take your questions now.
All right, are there any questions? Well, as a member of CAPSOL, we were very pleased to be able to approve this funding. All right, hearing. Any comments or questions at all? All right, I'm sorry, I thought you had one, Vice Mayor. All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I move that city council authorize application for a grant from the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro to purchase laptops retroactively to December 14th, 2020, as proposed.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
This is Terry Holmes, I second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Me, Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item F, a discussion in consideration of Augusta Regional Landfill Management Agreement. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will present this item this evening. You have before you for consideration and approval, a proposed landfill management agreement. The Augusta Regional Landfill is owned jointly by the cities of Waynesboro and Stanton and Augusta County. Together, the three localities own the facility. The management of the facility is handled by the Augusta County Service Authority, and that entity has a full-time landfill manager, Greg Thomason, as well as a staff that works with him to operate the landfill for the three owner localities. The prior agreement between the localities on the one hand and the service authority as the manager on the other hand expired at the end of calendar year 2020. It had a five-year term, as have management agreements previously. And so there's a need for a new management agreement between the localities and the authority to be put in place. So that's what you have before you this evening. In your agenda materials, there was a summary of the terms of the management agreement, largely unchanged from those that had been in effect for the prior five-year period. Without being exhaustive, some of the issues addressed in the management agreement are provision for quarterly meetings of the landfill management committee, which is comprised of the city managers and the county administrator. The agreement also addresses personnel standards for employees of the landfill. It makes provision for the preparation and submission to the localities of an annual budget. It addresses the need for the manager to ensure compliance with environmental permits. It charges the manager with the responsibility to maintain records and prepare reports as necessary. The manager also procures equipment and awards contracts, is responsible for recycling efforts at the landfill, as well as long-term planning and operational recommendations. So that, those are some of the highlights of the provisions that are addressed in the agreement, like the agreement that just expired, it too is for a five-year term, and at that time, there would then be a need for yet another agreement. So in summary, that's, that's what you have before you, and I'm pleased to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that proposed landfill management agreement among the county of Augusta, Stanton, and Waynesboro and the Augusta County Service Authority be approved, and the mayor be authorized to execute the agreement with such modifications and in final form as approved by the mayor and city attorney.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item G, discussion and consideration of resolution adopting, adopting updated 2020 Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, and emergency operations plan. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Fire Chief Scott Barber will present this item.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Before you tonight, you have a resolution for adoption of the most updated version of our regional emergency operations, regional being Augusta County, Stanton, and Waynesboro. I believe this is the third, or it's either the second or the third plan that has been done regionally. Prior to that, it was all individually, so we've come together now to work at the regional approach. The resolution is required by the Code of Virginia. Our staff helped update this emergency operations plan, as well as the Central Sandro Planning District Commission. They provided a lot of help with this as well, pretty much doing most of the work. You were provided a link to the EOP if you took the time to read it. You read about this much of material, which is a lot, so, and I'm sure you probably fell asleep while you were reading it, because it's pretty dry material. But basically, the emergency operations plan provides the concepts and structures for mitigating preparedness, response, and recovery of just about any type of emergency type of situation the city may encounter. We have our emergency support functions, which are annexes of what each emergency support function support function shall do during any type of emergency as described. And then, the only thing that's different between the three jurisdictions is we have our own annex, which may have different maps, different things, uh, specific to each locality. Um, that's about the only thing that's different between the three localities. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions that anybody may have on the emergency operations plan.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Holmes.
Chief, uh, Chief Barber, it, basically, this is gonna integrate the three, like the, the county, the Waynesboro, and, 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 uh, hel- help, help them work together better.
Yeah, it's so that we're all operating in emergency operations or certain situations. What, this is a large incident, uh, material that we're talking about, so we're all working together, because normally, that's gonna be a regional approach anyway, so it's therefore, we're all working off the same game plan. It's not, we, ours is different than theirs, and theirs is different. Um, it's all the same.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I move to adopt the resolution adopting the revised Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro Emergency Operations Plan dated December 2020.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item H, consideration of uncodified emergency ordinance, re-ratifying, reconfirming, and reaffirming an uncodified emergency ordinance 2020-04, and extending the time of reenactment. Mr. Rosenberg.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, during your work session, um, I shared with council some of the history concerning this item, and just to briefly recap, um, in March, council first adopted, uh, an emergency ordinance that provided for, um, use of electronic communications like Zoom to conduct council meetings and meetings of other public bodies in the city, given the pandemic and public health emergency. That original ordinance, um, authorized those means of conducting meetings, uh, through September of 2020, and in September of 2020, council acted to adopt another ordinance extending the period of authorization until tomorrow, which is January 15th of 2021. Um, what you have before you this evening is a draft ordinance that would provide for a further extension of that, uh, that authorization to a date desired by council, and also during the work session, uh, you heard from Dr. Laura Carnegie, the Health Director of the Central Shenandoah Health District, concerning current conditions related to the pandemic, and, um, you may wish to take, uh, her remarks into account as you make a decision on this matter. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
Uh, not for Mr. Rosenberg.
Okay. All right, any comments? Yes.
Uh, I just, I, I, I personally think that we should, this is, uh, Councilman Holmes, I personally think that until we all get our shots, that we should extend this until, you know, that we've all been vaccinated. I mean, I mean, they're saying now that it could go through the summer, I don't know, but, uh, I mean, until, until we all can be vaccinated, I, I think that it would, it would probably be, we should extend it to that period. And I don't, I don't know, I mean, I mean, if we need to do it three months at a time, we could do it like that, or, you know, but I do think that this should be extended until, uh, we're all vaccinated.
Okay. Um, Vice Mayor Robertson.
I would, uh, I wouldn't wanna go quite that far, I understand, but, but I, I would like to take a little more of a, um, I would say, let's extend it out 60 days and reassess at that point if we have to extend it again, if we, if numbers are bad, whatever, that's fine, but I would just say, let's do 60 days from, from this day, starting tomorrow, and then we can go from that point. I just put that out there as a, uh, an offer.
This is Councilmember Mead, uh, Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd just like to remind everybody that, uh, Dr. Carnegie, um, mentioned that even after, uh, there is vaccination, that the protocols of masking, social distancing, and hand washing need to be continued. And so I think taking that into consideration and taking into consideration that the inventory of vaccinations is not getting out as fast as it could or should, um, and that, uh, on their, on a best efforts basis, um, it, it may be several months until everyone is vaccinated. It seems that a 60-day period of time would not be sufficient. I was going to suggest that, uh, at the May 27th, 2021, a city council meeting, that we would have an opportunity to, uh, evaluate it again for a May 28th, 2021 date, but I'm willing to, um, consider something less than that, but I think 60 days is pretty short.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Carolyn Doll.
Uh, you know, I'm a fiscal person, I'm like, why don't we go for June 30th? The end of the fiscal year.
All right, are there any other comments from council members?
Thank you.
Councilman Holmes.
Thank you, I couldn't even remember who I was. Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Robertson, is there any reason why you just pick 60 days? Because I don't, I mean, I don't see anything changing in, in the next 60 days because of the way they're predicting all this stuff, and I mean, I, I mean, that'd be really wonderful if it is, but.
Oh, I agree, I, I'd like so.
But, but I just, I don't know if there's, there's, is there any reason why you pick 60 days, or is it just, you just wanna redo it every?
I just wanted to, I, I personally would like to take a look at it every 60 days at this point, and, and if, you know, if things are better, fantastic. If they're not, we can reevaluate it. I'm just, right now, I'm just not willing just to say.
I just feel like we're putting so many things on our agendas, you know, I mean, it's like, it's taking us forever to get through some of these things.
I'm, I'm staying.
And this is something maybe we could extend a little bit further, and so we don't have to deal with it again, you know, and if something happens and things change, we could always revisit it, I would think, couldn't we, Steve?
Uh, um, Madam Mayor, I, I was gonna, thinking it might help, um, council members in their discussions, I was going to observe that if there's some date that is selected and, and the ordinance is adopted with that date, it could be rescinded or modified a, at a later time if circumstances warranted in the view of council.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Carolyn Doll.
Um, Mr. Rosenberg's suggestion is, is, seems to me to be the most efficient way to do it, uh, because you can, it, you can set it, and if a miracle happens and everybody's got their shots quickly and, I mean, gotten both sets of them and all that, we can always change it at that point, but we'll know where we're at, uh, otherwise, we don't have to keep adding this to the agenda.
Are there any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
The, uh, the 60-day has a, uh, an attribute of being one year after the original state of emergency was declared, and, and I question, Mr. Rosenberg, what, uh, what exactly does occur that requires this besides the allowing of, of Zoom correspondence? Is there anything else that's being affected, or is this merely a method of allowing continued communication, uh, to exist in its current state?
Uh, it's, it's, it's the latter, Mr. Claffey, because you recall that there's separately and independently a declaration of local emergency that was confirmed by city council back in March of 2020, which remains in effect and requires no ongoing or continuing action by council to remain in effect, and is only, um, terminated when council affirmatively acts to terminate it. So, so the, the issue before you really is just the authorization to continue the utilization of electronic communications for council meetings, either entirely or on a hybrid basis.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
Uh, Mr. Rosenberg, where, since the primary, um, usefulness of this is to continue the Zoom communications, is, is this also something that, uh, could specify, for instance, that if you're using Zoom, that you show your face during the whole meeting, um, or that you use, you know, if it's a closed meeting, that you are, like, we can see everyone? Is that language that we could establish within the ordinance?
I'm looking to see if Mr. Gwynn.
Mr. Gwynn. Mr. Gwynn?
Your presence is requested.
The question is?
The question is, with this, uh, emergency ordinance that is effectively allowing for Zoom communication to continue, is there language that could be stated that specifically, um, addresses that folks using Zoom have to show their face during the meetings, whether they're open meetings or closed meetings?
City council could adopt an ordinance, some form of this ordinance, that includes such a requirement.
Thank you.
Mayor Oaks, I have a question of, uh, of Laura Gwynn.
Councilmember Mead.
Uh, could we also add, uh, to this draft, uh, that the, uh, ordinance would include specifically the attendance at the nominations committee meetings?
Council also could include a provision that would allow virtual or remote attendance by council member at the nominations committee or any other committee that was a part of city council.
Thank you. Seems like that would be a very efficient way to handle that particular request.
Madam Mayor, the challenge is that this ordinance expires tomorrow, and I'm not sure that we can look to Mr. Gwynn to revise the ordinance in the time that we have remaining for tonight's meeting, and you'll recall that the ordinance authorizes not only city council to use like, an electronic communications platform, but it also authorizes other bodies like the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the School Board. So if the ordinance is let, left to expire today because it doesn't include the sorts of provisions that Ms. Darby and Ms. Mead are suggesting, then I think we're in a little bit of a difficult spot, um, concerning not only council, um, at its meeting on January 28th, which would be, um, unless there's a special meeting in there in between, um, for some of the purposes that we've discussed earlier this evening, uh, you know, both council as well as, um, these other public bodies of the city are in a position where they have no option other than to convene in person.
Okay, is there any way at all to amend it during whatever time period is decided upon?
So if there was an agreement reached concerning the, the period of the extension, and council adopted an ordinance tonight, we, we could, I think, and I'm looking to Mr. Gwynn, come back to you again on the 28th and add, or, or to present to you for your consideration, additional provisions that address these other issues that are, that are being raised.
Okay. Yes, go ahead. The, um, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Ca- Councilman Claffey, what, the, what time period would you be willing to go for, sir?
Uh, I think the 60-day thing is going to extend us to one year after the, uh, emergency ordinance was, was originally ratified, and I think that's a logical step.
Can I make?
Extend it to one year and then revisit.
Madam Mayor.
All right, um, uh, the city manager would like to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
If you would allow.
Mr. Claffey and Mr. Robertson, i- if I could, um, you know, for purposes of, of planning for all of these various boards and commissions that are using the electronic communications, it, it would be helpful, not, not, it, it's certainly not required, or, or, you know, but it would be helpful if we could leave this in effect at least through the end of a calendar month, so that we get through a complete cycle of, you know, the, all of these bodies meet at least once a month. So if we could get through a calendar month, it would, it would simplify matters for staff, and so my suggestion.
Can we go the last day of March, Steve?
Would, well, my suggestion would be to continue it through April 9th, which would mean we would have it, we would get all the way through March, and then at your council meeting on April 8th, you would then consider whether to extend it again.
And that's three additional?
If you, if you only extend it through March 31st, then your council meeting on the 8th has to be in person.
Uh, that's one, never mind. Steve, are you willing to do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that takes it out 30 additional weeks, did I count that right? My glasses. So, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the emergency through April the 8th, is that correct, Steve?
Uh, April 9th.
April 9th, excuse me.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I, I will second that.
All right, uh, and Councilmember Claffey has seconded. Any further discussion? Maybe we can bring, uh, Dr. Carnegie back for an additional update at that time.
Sounds good.
All right, um, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is item I, city council to consider appointment and employment of new city attorney. Mr. Rosenberg.
Uh, Madam Mayor and members of council, um, during your closed meeting this evening, I shared with you the, um, the final version of the appointment and employment agreement for the new city attorney, um, and, uh, that has been approved, uh, as the legal form by Special Counsel Craig Brown. Uh, I, I think I just.
Craig Wood.
Thank you, Craig Wood. Craig, that, that's quite a slip there, um, uh, Craig Wood with McGuire Woods, and, uh, it's been signed by, uh, your to-be-appointed city attorney, who is here with you this evening in council chambers, and the agenda briefing before you includes, um, a motion with a couple of blanks. Uh, the one is for the commencement of the term of appointment, which is, uh, March 15th, 2021, so whichever of you makes the motion will want to read it with that March 15th, 2021 date, and then, um, the blank at the end would be, uh, completed with the name of your appointed city attorney. Ready?
All right, are there any questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that the city council hereby appoint an. I move that the city council hereby appoint and employ the following individual as the new city attorney of the city of Stanton for an indefinite term to begin on March 15th, 2021, and that the mayor be authorized to execute the appointment employment agreement as reviewed and discussed further in today's closed meeting with such modifications and in final form as approved by the city's special counsel, Mr. John Blair II.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. It's Terry Holmes.
We have a second by Councilmember Holmes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Hi.
Mr. Holmes.
Hi.
Mr. Claffey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Ms. Dahl.
Hi.
Ms. Mead.
Hi.
Mayor Oaks.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Would you would like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. Knowing that the evening is getting late, I will keep this short. But I would like to thank you, all seven of you, for the honor and privilege to serve as your legal counsel as city attorney of Stanton, Virginia. I will do my best for all seven of you, as well as the staff, to protect your legal interest and the city's legal interest at the same time. It's my hope that I can be a contributor to your team. I found Stanton to be a warm, vibrant, and just welcoming community. I'd like to thank you all for your vote of confidence. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gwynn and Ms. Wallace for the work they've done before me. And thank also the Charlottesville City Council where I'm coming from for the opportunity to serve there. But I am excited to join your team. And I look forward to helping this community become the best it can be.
Thank you. Mr. Blair, welcome to the family. All right, the next item is matters from the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I have just one item this evening. And I think some of you are aware of that, well, all of you are aware that what is now known as shop and sign-out in downtown came to its conclusion at the end of the New Year's holiday weekend. Tourism director Cheryl Wagner and SBA executive director Greg Beam are working to survey retailers and restaurants in the downtown service district to learn from them how they would like to move forward with that initiative. I imagine in some form it will resume later in the calendar year. We extended it twice along the way. And on the occasion of both of those extensions, it was very clear that the sentiment, both amongst the retailers and the restaurants, was universal, universally in favor of continuation. Now, when we got to the end of December, you know, around the holidays with the colder weather, it was no longer so clear that everybody wanted to do the same thing. And so we moved forward with bringing the program to an end as scheduled, I believe on January 4th, 3rd, or the 4th. And Ms. Wagner and Mr. Beam are working with stakeholders in the service district to, to get input. And then they will formulate a recommendation that they'll bring to me. And we will also, of course, bring into the mix Jeff Johnston and the Public Works team because they obviously contribute along with the police department a lot of the, the boots on the ground that are necessary to put this into place on what has been a weekly basis. So it may not look the same when it starts back up. But I can assure you that what is implemented will be the result of input from the broad community and thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is matters from the public. If you would like to come to the podium, you have five minutes to speak. We ask that you give us your name and your address. We will also accept callers from Zoom. And we'll go ahead and Mr. Baldwin says we're going to get started with the folks in the audience. Go ahead, Mr. Baldwin. Jennings.
My name is Baldwin James, 332 Sharon Lane, Stanton. What I'm concerned about, we had in the downtown section on Beverly Street, it had ballots put up crossing the street. It was not well thought out. I've done quite a few projects in my days, man, like the whole patents. And we're, and the first thing you learn is you consider safety first. These ballots, when they're taken up, they leave a imprint in the walker, approximately 10 by 10, I mean, I hadn't measured, and maybe two inches or so deep. That should be covered up and brought up to the level of the sidewalk because people can easily trip and city be liable lawsuit. So I ask that our city manager take his project on and make sure it's done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like? Welcome, Dr. Curran.
Thank you.
Eric.
Hey, how are you? Good evening, everyone. Eric Curran, 14 South Washington, Stanton. Madam Mayor, members of city council, good to be back, good to see you. I'm going to start with a quote from John Adams. Remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself. There never was a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. Very pessimistic. Can we prove this founding father wrong? Many Americans take our democratic republic for granted. But history shows that democracy is very fragile. The default condition of humankind is not democracy, but rather autocracy, traced across thousands of years of rule by generalissimos, kings, emperors, caliphs, shoguns, and maharajas. Each of you has taken an oath to the Constitution of the United States, which carries a grave responsibility to protect our democracy. Democracies depend on valid elections. And so I'm going to ask you to consider a couple of different elections, two very unusual ones that took place during the pandemic. And each of them had a high quantity of mail-in ballots. The first election, you'll remember, was our local election for city council in May of 2020. At that time, three candidates, including myself, lost our bid for reelection for Stanton City Council. I can assure you that none of us liked the result. Yet, though vote totals were close in at least one race, none of us asked for a recount, as allowed by state law. And certainly, none of us started a public campaign to discredit the election and overturn the results. None of us gave speeches urging followers to storm City Hall. Instead, we accepted the will of the voters. At that time, I wish you all well. And since I remain committed to Stanton's prosperity, I still wish you well. I want you to be a success. Contrast that with the presidential election held in the fall of last year. For months in advance, Donald Trump said that if he lost, the election would be invalid. When he did lose to Joe Biden in November, Trump started a cynical propaganda campaign with the name Stop the Steal to override the election results and keep himself in office for four more years. Many leaders of his party, including our own member of Congress, supported the president's baseless accusations of election fraud. This dangerous game led to the violent takeover of the U.S. Capitol by a mob of supporters, including known members of domestic terrorist groups and white supremacist groups, attempting a coup d'etat on January 6th. Stop the Steal was always a lie. There was no steal to stop. State election officials and courts across the country affirmed that Biden's win was free and fair. Trump's own election commissioner said, quote, "The November 3rd election was the most secure in American history." At first, Stop the Steal sounded to me like harmless politicking, merely a way to rile up Trump's base and Bush Party fundraising. However, then came Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, a date that will forever live in infamy. A Capitol Police officer and others were killed. A gallows was erected by a mob demanding to hang Vice President Mike Pence. Let that sink in. They wanted to hang the vice president. Attackers with plastic handcuffs trying to kidnap or kill House Speaker Nancy Pelosi and other Democrats entered the Capitol. The People's House was defiled. Broken windows, furniture hauled off, Nazi regalia, and a Confederate flag flaunted in the sacred temple of the American Republic. This despicable attack has struck fear into the hearts of Americans from coast to coast. In Stanton, the danger of more violence on inauguration date next week in Washington, in capitals of all 50 states, and even here locally, is the top issue on our citizens' minds right now, whether they voted Democratic, Republican, or independent. We want reassurance from our local elected officials. I don't know if any of you participated in the president's rally in Washington last week. Nor do I know if any of you spoke at the Stop the Steal rally held in Stanton Mall in the fall. I hope not. The actions of elected officials set a powerful example for our citizens. Fortunately, America has always been a country of second chances. And there's still time, yes.
I hate to do this to you. Can you?
Yes, yes, I'll read. I'm asking for you to pass a resolution. Number one, affirm that the November election was free, fair, and valid. Number two, denounce the attack on the Capitol and ask that the president be held accountable for his actions. And number three, commit to protect Stanton citizens from armed terrorist activity in our local area. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come to the podium to speak? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Deborah Kushner, and I live at 1311 North Augusta Street. Four of you ran on Republican platforms in the election rather than the traditional at-large seats. You chose a divisive stance rather than an inclusive one. So where on the Republican spectrum do you stand now, post-January 6th? Your community needs to know and has been waiting to hear. How many of you were in DC on that terrible day? Did you illegally enter the Capitol building? Did you do damage? Were you armed? Are you proud of your actions? Your silence concerning the violence of January 6th is both alarming and astonishing. We know where John Avoli, Ben Klein, even the daily news leader stands, but not you. If your silence is embarrassment at being caught up in an action you didn't bargain for, fess up and be human. If your silence is fear of being outed before the community that until the election you worked shoulder to shoulder with, well, then, yes, you should feel humiliated. You all swore oaths to uphold the Constitution. But how is it you find time to sow further divisiveness, if not outright, if not outright damage in Washington and in your community with Stop the Steal lies that undermine our democratic systems you pretend to abide by, but don't find the time to further our community's basic needs right here at home? Showing up for your own community takes persistence and commitment. If you ran to further the aims of your particular partisan policies, shame. If you ran to serve the community as a whole, get to work on that. Your moral character is in question here, right here before the community you've sworn to serve. Show us what you're made of. There's truly no time or space for more divisiveness. Do you want to further the needs and aims of the larger Stanton community or your own partisan ones? And one quote from Thomas Paine. "In the monarchies, the king is the law; but in the democracies, the law will be king." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Mr. Rosenberg.
We have one caller on the telephone line. Now we have two of the peers. Yes. Is, is the caller on the line?
Yes, I am. This is Mitch Narduzzi at 13 South Jefferson Street. I want to start off on a good note and say that I appreciate the effort that Mayor Oaks took this week to reach out to me to have a very constructive conversation about community concerns over the expansion of the Middle River Regional Jail. Thank you, Mayor Oaks. Truly, I appreciate it. See, I can be nice. I merely respond in kind. I'm going to refrain from saying all the things that I'd like to say about the vice mayor's positions on the annual treat, his inability to adjust to Zoom technology, and his wasteful use of council time to discuss arbitrary dates to return to in-person meetings because, quite frankly, most of what he said was just plain stupid. A pharmacist who thinks that COVID vaccines could be universally distributed within the next 60 days is probably not a pharmacist that I would want filling my prescriptions, much less making decisions for our community. My dismay over the shenanigans that continue to take place on council doesn't end there, Mr. Claffey. No one is fooled by your blatant attempts to use the position that was granted to you by your fellow Republicans on council to shut out other members from the governing and oversight process. In fact, your behaviors are an example of a disgusting abuse of power that does not serve our community, but instead leaks of your white male privilege and resistance to inclusiveness. I encourage you to find a way to include all other council members in your nomination committee board meetings before you hold the next meeting. Anything else is unacceptable. As our elected leaders, the responsibility of de-escalating community unrest lies heavily on your shoulders. The simple truth is, our community is still reeling from the violence that was perpetrated by insurrectionists at our nation's Capitol last week. With haste, you must make a strong public statement denouncing not only the violence and the extensive coup, but also denounce the Stop the Steal conspiracy theory used by Trump and his allies to repeatedly and falsely claim voter and state election fraud, fraudulent claims which were rejected as totally meritless by numerous state and federal judges, state and local election officials, governors, the Justice and Homeland Security Department, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, and the Electoral College Coalition of Federal and State Officials. In addition, not only are each of you obligated to ensure that none of those insurrectionists are amongst us, you must also take responsibilities for the part that you may have played in foaming this type of partisan rhetoric that led to five deaths, including the heinous murder of a Capitol Police officer. Trying to divert attention away from your own culpability by focusing on your own agenda or pivoting to a racist comparison to Black Lives Matter movement is exceedingly poor judgment on your part and a dereliction of your duties. While some of you fantasize over being an eagle, let me assure you, our community consists of many crows. And it is true, the only bird that will bear peck at an eagle is the crow. Crows build roots. Even after seasonal migration, they generally return to the same region and often the same tree year after year, promoting a sense of grounding for their families and minimal disruption to the local ecosystem. They even attack an eagle in order to protect their nest from possible danger. They carefully scavenge for what they need and save any excess food they've collected until they need it. But they don't gather more than they need. They don't waste. Crows know their place in the pecking order, and they use it wisely. For example, they often call out to other species, like wolves and coyotes, to let them know where the roadkill is. Then, after the large predators have exposed the carcass and left the more accessible picking, the birds move in. Being first in line or being the top dog isn't what's important to them. Crows come together when necessary. Crows grieve when senseless death occurs. Crows pay attention to the world and see us for who we really are. Crows have been known to attach to specific human beings and dogs after discovering which ones are trustworthy and which ones are trouble. They judge us based on our integrity, not on what we wear or what we drive or what position we hold. And of course, they pay attention to what's going on around their. And of course, they pay attention to what's going on around them because they care about their world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hello. This is Suzanne Sishter. I live at 101 Waverly Green in Stanton. When I was a college student in the late 1960s, I studied in Spain when that country was controlled by the fascist dictator Francisco Franco. I imagine most people listening to me have never lived in a fascist country. It was an eye-opening experience. And since then, I've read a lot about fascism and totalitarianism, and also about people who live in fascist countries who collaborate with fascists and Nazis. I've learned that a person who walks with Nazis or is silenced in the face of white supremacy in their midst, that person is a collaborator and an enabler of hate. What our outgoing president attempted by questioning the election results this year, last year, was a fascist coup and nothing less. U.S. security agencies have identified at least seven white supremacists and far-right militia groups who attended the Stop the Steal rally and stormed the Capitol last week. I have to ask, three and a half years after Charlottesville, how can anyone participate in an anti-democratic event such as the one last week? Those people were terrorists and fascists. There are not fine people on both sides. And we need to ask ourselves, in the words of the Civil Rights Song, which side are you on? Which side are we on? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next caller.
There are no more callers, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to take a moment because I wanted to listen to the citizens first before I made any sort of statement. Riots are the language of the unheard. These are the famous words by the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. So many people across our country feel as though they have not been heard. And as a result, we have riots. We have riots in Portland, and we also have riots at the Capitol. We need to take time to respectfully listen to one another. I ran on a platform stating that I would listen to my citizens. I want us to be able to reach a point where we can respectfully and with honor and dignity, listen to one another. Because if we are to do just that, peace will soon follow. Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Just for purposes of clarity, the motion need only address the fourth and fifth items that are in the agenda briefing from the work session. So the whole, all five items need not be recited in the motion, just the fourth and fifth items.
Did everybody get that?
Yes.
All right.
I got it.
Councilmember Holmes.
Okay. I move the council enter a closed meeting for discussion.
No, the fourth and fifth, and it needs to be from the agenda briefing and not from the agenda.
Okay. From the agenda briefing, consulting and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to specific pending litigation claims pursuant to the Virginia Code 2.2-371188. And four, I mean, five, consultation and discussion with legal counsel requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to specific land use and development matters pursuant to Code, Virginia Code Section 2.2-371188.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead. Ms. Mead.
I beg your pardon. Here, aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now in closed session. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Mayor Oakes.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We're now back in open session. And as Mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting adjourned.